You're good, Jack.
No.
All right.
I'm muted now.
Oh, yeah, I'm muted then.
You guys?
Now.
Now we're good.
Now we're good.
All right, I'd like to call the Village Council Regular Meeting to order show the date, Tuesday, March 8, 2022. I show the time at 6:07. So we also have a full quorum, a few in Zoom world. I need a motion to consider participation remotely.
So moved.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you all. Next up, we have adoption in the agenda. Do we have any changes?
Yeah, are these additions?
Yes.
Okay, so under consent agenda, I need to add number 10. Consider adoption of resolution appointing the budget officer. I thought that was in there. It's in there now.
What's it before? Instead of I put in automatic, I asked you to write it down.
Oh, okay. All right, number 11, consider adoption of ordinance amending Chapter 74 traffic schedules to prohibit left turn lanes from Newtown Road onto Marvin Road during morning peak hours. Unfinished business G. Number four, consider adoption of resolution to assume all maintenance of, or to assume maintenance of all roads within the Barcroft subdivision. And new business H, number four, discussion and consideration of full bond release of bond from Marvin Gardens Wet Pond number two, bond number 107317715. And that is all I have.
Anyone else? There is none. I'll have a motion to, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passed. Next up, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next up, we have public comment period. Do we have anyone signed up?
Nope.
All right, anyone in Zoom world? Anyone is unmuting, so we're going to move on to presentations. Do we have any?
Nope.
Okay, so go on to see reports and updates. Managers report, Christine.
So just wanted to mention real fast that something's been brought into attention for the roundabout irrigation. Just wanted to make sure everyone was on board with me getting a quote from someone to run the lines from the well site to the two roundabouts that we have that we need water to. This was not something that was in the budget, so we'll have to do a budget amendment from Capitol or from somewhere else. Just want to make sure everyone's on board with that. If you're not, just let me know.
The lines are already there, right?
No.
The pipe is there.
The conduits, the conduits in there, but not the water pipes.
Not from the well to the site.
They have to run actual water lines out there and do the irrigation heads and all that.
So are you doing three bids or just? Is that what you're asking to avoid that?
I would prefer to avoid that if possible.
Do you have somebody in mind?
I don't, I can, no, I don't.
Should be fairly easy to get three bids. There's a gazillion of those guys out there. I can give you a couple of references to check with, but there's plenty of them out there.
And I know who not.
Are there any objections to moving forward that? That's all I have.
That's it? You're holding it as a report?
It is, yes.
Wow.
You sure you don't want to take more time?
I got, I got seven rows.
How about funds?
Next up, planners report.
The only thing that I'd like to pitch you guys on is the Pulte Park. I've been talking to the developer for that, see if we can get that land donation. They're willing, however, they are finishing the development and he's requested that, you know, basically would want the HOA's kind of approval. So they, they'll be holding elections. I'm trying to get more information so we can get a chance to talk with them, but he did state that he didn't think it would be an issue for them to donate that property. So if we all have more information as we move forward and can really maybe start figuring that, developing a plan for the development of that parcel for recreation purposes. The other thing that I'll mention with that and getting in front of that HOA is that I think Wayne mentioned this about the cell towers, that there's potential opportunity for annexation of those. They are townhomes, but you know, that's a, an avenue to potentially also discuss with them during that, that chance if that's something that council's interested in.
To do what? To do for townhomes?
The annex in the townhouses.
The townhomes are already there.
Right.
And Wayne might be able to add more to this. I know that he talked to certain property owners there during that cell tower event. And you know, they maybe expressed some interest in annexing into Marvin. And you know, the development's already finished, so there would be no additional townhomes being built. It would just basically would be, you know, they would annex in, we'd get the tax base and.
What happens if another developer comes in and wants to put townhouses in and says, oh, Marvin, you have townhouses?
I'm pretty sure that that was approved as a conditional zoning district through the county. I'll have to double check with that, but if it was, then it would be the same thing. Like if we annexed in and then we gave it its own designation, it would just, it would be its own individual conditional zoning district, just like the Court Guards or Marvin Gardens or any of that. So it'd have its own standards and already approved uses. And we don't allow townhomes in any of our districts, but a developer has the same right as he would to do an individual conditional zoning district and apply for that if he chooses. So it's a similar concept, but your guys' fallback would be that you didn't vote or approve that and it was just annexed in. I mean, so.
Comfortable with that? Is it? Is there going to be any complications?
Upon any annexation, there's a, one of the forms in the statute requires you to check if you have vested rights. And they would check that they have vested rights to approve the courts with their plans. So it would still continue under the development approvals from the county.
Let's say somebody came to us and said, well, you've got townhomes in Marvin, you know, five years from now, how can you let that happen and you don't let us build?
That is a, that is a political issue, but not a legal issue. I think legally you just said, well, it was already there. It's going to be there either way. And we decided it would be best for the town as a whole, going to annex it, get the tax revenue and also any other future type controls that we could get, which would be limited because of the vested rights, but you could still have more control over property in your municipal limits than outside. Because that's what happens a lot of times, people will go right to your edge. And that's why we always try to look at ETJ and we're still going to try to work with the Indian County to get that in the future. So people will come in and get all the benefits of the municipal limits and not pay the taxes and have the elevation. So yes, I'm, I don't have major concerns with it.
Yeah, it's just a point of conversation. It would be similar to as Austin's kind of, you know, conveyed before, since it says some of it, technically, I guess unless we got the land donation, it would all be, it wouldn't be contiguous.
It would, it would entirely contiguous.
If we got the land donation now, because it's separate.
Does it run entire, does the land donation run entirely behind the subdivision?
Yeah.
And yeah, we would get the land donation and it would be contiguous.
Yeah, so then certain properties could, but at the same time, I mean, we'd still approach it and try to have the whole development come in at once. And from a townhome standpoint, I mean, I doubt there, like, once again, the accessory that's not, from a zoning standpoint, there's not much more that would be additionally going to be able to do on those properties anyway, even at the county level. So it's really not a concern.
Would we consider trying to pull in all that commercial into Marvin too?
If you guys would like. I mean, that's a conversation that can be had with those properties. Because I'm pretty sure, like I said, it was done as conditional zoning and the doctor's offices and stuff that's up until Andy's, I think is always part of that approval. I'll have to go double check with that on the county, at the county level, but you know, I would specifically be approaching the residential townhomes and what's of that, but I mean, that's another conversation to have with those commercial properties.
I mean, if you bring all that into Marvin, somebody else starts coming and puts a cell tower there, you're going to have a lot harder time doing it. It's just, it's just a thought. I mean, I don't think that's top priority right now, but I think the townhomes and, you know, getting to their HOA meeting and talking to them about the park, is top priority.
Yeah, and then basically the only request from the developer on that was as long as that the residential townhome has connectivity to it, which I'm sure that would be, you know, assured.
Do it.
Yeah. Connect with our Greenway system and sidewalks.
Okay.
Good deal.
All right, next up, roads report, Christine.
Yes.
You've got a lot?
Yes, I do. So the question was asked, I think it was three, for when DOT is going to start back resurfacing. They're actually going to start back on, in the spring to summer of '23. The first roads that we have up in their schedule for subdivision resurfacing is Valhalla Farms and what was the other one called?
Willow Creek.
Willow Creek. So those two are projected on summer of '23. Again, it's all projections, it's all based off of budget and funding and all that stuff. So that could change, but that's what they're anticipating.
And how much are we, what was the, do we know what the breakdown is about?
No, I don't know, I'll start from ahead, but I know all of our commitments that we had already verbally said was less than $10,000, so.
For this to go around?
Yes, well, I don't know about this one, but across the board, it was $10,000 per year. It was $10,000 to $12,000 per year, so it's not going to be much. The no left turn ordinance has been updated. It's in your consent agenda, so basically we're going to be changing that sign out to reflect peak hours of morning as well, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., I believe.
6:00 to 9:00.
6:00 to 9:00 a.m. So we'll make that change. That was reflected in the state's request.
Pick a few off?
Yes.
We can, we can enforce it until we actually have the sign up, so that, we'll order that sign after tonight.
I want Mason just standing at the corner, go.
When does the sign come out? Go ahead, I dare you. Go ahead.
Go ahead, turn.
Generally, generally it takes a couple of months to get a sign, so.
Perfect, the roundabout will be in by then.
It actually doesn't, it's actually about a month roughly, it's not bad.
So then the next thing y'all.
Can I go out there with a Sharpie and write it in there?
Y'all had asked me about the Newtown Road estimates, and now these were estimates done maybe in 2018 or 2019. And I had two options at the time. One of them was $20,000, the other one was $190,000. And the $190,000 was really what was needed to make sure things got done the way they needed to. So y'all had asked us at the retreat to bring back the discussion of potentially taking over that road. I don't know if y'all want me to get some updated numbers on this to push Willis further on getting DOT to go ahead and do it at the time of roundabout, but just wanted to bring that back to your attention about the numbers.
I see him.
Do y'all want me to do anything further from that, or y'all, y'all just want me to wait till y'all bring it back up?
No, I don't want to. I want, I want to, I want to keep moving up. I want to keep pushing up all forward.
Yeah.
Okay.
What are the, what are the discrepancies numbers? 20,000 and what?
Almost 200.
And then 200, 200 basically. 20,000, 200,000.
Was it the length of it? Nope, same length. That was all the shoulder stuff. Well, shouldn't DOT be fixing the shoulder anyway?
They should, but.
On like, like for their ditches?
It's bad.
But didn't we do it?
Yeah, but they're not doing, they're not doing, they're repairing it. They're not doing like a preventative maintenance, whereas this was like re-sloping the ditch lines and make it better in the future. They're basically just putting a Band-Aid on it and what they're doing, what we asked them to do.
And that's just up here?
If they put.
Where is it at?
All the way down.
Any shower issues?
Wax on Marvin Road to the South Carolina line.
I see it every day. It's frightening how.
But if, if they slap a Band-Aid on it and then they assess it, wouldn't the Band-Aid take care of a lot of this?
I would highly doubt it, because they're literally just backfilling it. And what Mike was proposing is for us to re-slope the ditch line so that the water comes off in a better format. Because the Band-Aid, they're backfilling the ditch line or the, wherever's needed, it's literally going to wash out in a couple, couple months. And if I recall correctly, this did not include to the state line. I think it only included for roundabout to propose roundabout.
It says the South Carolina line.
Oh, okay, okay.
And the state line, as soon as you cross over the state line, that's terrible. That's terrible.
The ditch line?
This fixes to the road.
Oh.
You can feel when you hit the state line.
Does that? Because one thing that we need to consider with that is, is that if we take over the road, we're going to drop the speed on it. We're going to get rid of the trucks. So those are two big things that are, that are watering out the shoulders and wearing the road down quickly.
So there's.
So we should consider that a little bit.
Two things that I can do, I can ask AMT to go ahead and give us another revised quote and we can go back to the starting point and negotiate with them to go ahead and get it done. Or I can see, continue to pressure Willis to see if they can get them to do it at the time of roundabout and then we'll take it over at that point.
I mean, I think that's a big thing. Plus whenever they do the roundabout, they're going to have to go down and fix a bunch of area, right? I mean, how far down are they going to have?
Shoulders and everything.
So I mean, that's going to be, that's going to take out a giant chunk of.
So just, just to be clear, back up a step, if we did go that route, Hunter, would we need ordinance to prevent trucks to come through?
Yes.
So that, how do we get that?
Then we'll put up the no truck sign. No trucks over like 10, 10 tons, 18, whatever it is.
No fruit trucks. There's a sign right over there on.
Same thing you're doing with no.
Like number of accidents.
No, 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 but.
More signs.
So what I'll do then, so we're not going to.
Yeah, but we're going to get rid of the no left turn sign, so we'll just replace it with a no truck sign. And we'll do it at the line.
Yeah, we can do it at the line, but we also need to coordinate with DOT, South Carolina with DOT.
Not my problem. I'm going to have Mason there, right there at the line.
They need to have a sign too.
It has to be a sign at the other end in South Carolina so that they don't come up and get hung. They have to have an intersection to be able to negotiate away from the road.
Yeah, I don't know about that.
That's not my problem, that's their problem. I'm going to have to figure that out.
Unless y'all want me to spend money from AMT to get them to go back out and assess that property again, I can just pull the strings from Willis and get him to try to get some negotiating done.
Definitely work on that.
Okay.
And then fine, but again, when they redo the roundabout, that's going to take out, I mean, a decent.
That's going to take the biggest problem areas and fix them.
I mean, for a lot, I mean, for.
So if we can't get the road repaved, at least let's look at it after, you know.
And, and if we have a new development down there around the corner, there's probably going to be some road fixage, maybe, just saying.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll jump on that with Willis.
You don't feel like your procedures are a little more poorly, do you?
I'll update you guys later on another work session to go over this in more detail.
But I definitely think talking to David about it is hard.
That's all I have.
Okay, any questions?
Get off your phone, let's go.
No, I have notes.
Why, why did he do notes in there?
Because I, I had a conversation.
Why are you pointing at me?
Because I have a conversation.
He's getting all techie on us all of a sudden.
Yeah, yeah. So where are we at?
Deputy's report.
So I click on my little.
Yeah, just got to come over here and click on your little thing there.
Thank you, Ken.
There, there. One, one time, one, there, now hit open or hit it there, there you go.
There you are. I looked at these earlier.
Was my alarm in there?
Uh, no, but you're not in Marvin.
Oh, yeah. Her rented property is not in Marvin.
I would, I'd annex in though.
She is not.
That's in the reserve.
Yeah.
I will say, the only thing I'd like to say, I was a little disappointed in how many HOA presidents showed up.
Yeah, that was kind of a bust out on mine.
Yeah.
And nobody that was there has reached out to them and stuff. That's kind of disappointing.
I've asked Christine to just talk to them about bundling, because you know, you look at Marvin Creek, they've got seven entrances and it's $2,500 pop, like, they're not going to spend that. They're just, I mean, they've got, if they, if they want to do it, they've got to come and I think do some sort of discount for.
I was just talking to someone about how quick you were able to resolve the issue. And they were very impressed. And I'm trying to think where that was or who I was talking to.
I mean, you're.
It's probably somebody in Firedorn.
No.
Sorry.
I know you guys have been working it, because I've heard the sirens.
Oh, I've seen them at Marvin Elementary, I'm like, yay!
I heard trying to, somebody to grab us. Was it yesterday morning or this morning? Whoa, and I heard the woo-woo.
Well, we were at, we got, there was 12, there was 12 this morning on.
Marvin School Road?
On the school road. So 12 different people.
Oh, wow, you shouldn't be speeding on Marvin School Road.
And then there was a, we've got four or five in my neighborhood on Wax on Marvin that was coming in, so.
A neighborhood?
Yeah, me and Tommy have hit the neighborhoods a little bit harder, so some of these are funny.
There was, there was three out on Joe Card's the other day, three sheriff.
Yeah. I laid down.
And they didn't catch me.
Because I was following the rules.
No, nothing, nothing special about it.
Yeah, okay. Any questions from council, Wayne or Robert?
It just seems like the, the accident rates keep staying.
There was two today, so.
12.
Were they mostly occurring?
Wax on Marvin, just people didn't, just pulling out Stacy Highway and not looking.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a train wreck right there. I don't know what they're going to do. And they're getting four homes there, right?
Six.
Six, and then you got the other 70-some that are coming in from the other way.
That'll be interesting. Yeah, it's only going to get worse, worse, worse. I don't know what they're going to do there.
I'll have to look.
I will mention that, NC DOT.
Marvin bypass.
I think we should put a toll right there.
As I say, with the Broadmore subdivision, and I'd have to go look at the details, when they got their approvals from NC DOT, there were road improvements that they have to make. I don't know what they, like I said, entail, I mean, definitely get some information.
Right there?
Yeah, of that intersection, because.
So the other, the other one south with the six string homes, they don't have to do any improvements?
They don't have much.
Nope.
Because they're all coming out individually.
They're coming out individually as well as Broadmore was already approved to put in these road improvements for the, because Broadmore does have an entrance off of Stacy Highway and Wax on Marvin.
I hope they're retired people that are moving in there that don't have to deal with, because there's, it's, it's a lot. Because, and then the other issue is it's not, it's not deep enough that the gate for progress down south, because they get backed up on that gate and people try to turn in there.
They only get like three cars.
If that, if they don't have a stacking.
When they turn in, there's three days there, section there.
All right, well, I don't have any questions, all right? Thank you, appreciate it.
Good job, Mason. Thanks, Mason.
Thanks.
Next up, we have planning board report. Who dat?
Bob, number seven.
Well, this is John Jones, John Jones normally, I don't think he's on the line, but Bob, do you have anything for planning board? I mute, please.
We just had a meeting. Don't you know what's going on? It was pretty straightforward. They talked about the throwing ball that you see on the agenda. Talked about, they took a court about the sketch. We saw a sketch of the heritage of Marvin subdivision. And then discussed, basically amongst themselves, they discussed their 2022 sort of goals that they would like to accomplish. It was, it was pretty informative and quick.
Okay. Yeah, we met, was it a week ago?
Last week.
So we got one pretty well. That's all you have?
That's it.
Thank you. Next up, PR and G board report.
So it's mostly, we've just been working, we've been working on Marvin Day. I'm also later on going to talk about the Pocket Park a little bit, but really those have kind of been our big things. We did, at the park, the new sign went up.
It looks green.
And it was amazing, if you guys haven't seen it.
I haven't been down that way this week.
Can you send that picture to me?
Yeah, I probably did.
Oh, that's nice.
It looks good.
And it is permitted.
And it's permitted and compliant, so. Love that. So, yeah, that's about it.
What's your next meeting?
Our next meeting is.
You have a joint meeting.
It's a joint meeting, it's the last Tuesday of the month with.
29.
Council and Park, Second Greenway. Mark your calendars, be there or be square.
I show that, let's go. Okay. The only thing I'd say is before, as we get into March, whenever your meeting, it'd be good to have, and maybe make a notice that the quorum may exist if council comes, because as we get closer to May 21st, you know, it's, it's helpful, I mean, I, to show up, I think Jamie, you show up occasionally and stuff, but there's a lot of questions that would be great to have us there if, as we get closer to the, because it's usually at the end of your meeting we're talking about, or is it all Marvin Day right now?
It's, it's usually at the end.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's not the only thing we're talking about.
But I'll, then obviously we'll all be at the next one, but the one after that, if you're doing any special ones. Okay. Grazie. Next up, we have consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Aye.
Next up, we have village hall.
Nope, next up, we have public hearing.
A public hearing, I'm sorry. Yes, where's my, there we go.
I got it.
You got this?
No, I bet like I got you.
You'll need a motion open the public hearing.
All right, I'll need a motion open the public hearing.
So moved.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have to, you should probably, the motion for this public hearing, you have to take that.
You open it up and mayor and council members, I do want to remind you, you don't have many of these, this is what we call a quasi judicial hearing. So you're supposed to base your, your decision on what is presented before you. So you're supposed to base your, your decision on what is presented before you. It seems more formal than it is, but the witnesses need to be sworn in. Um, and they present the, uh, the testimony before you, and then you go through, basically on what was presented, propose a public hearing, and make your findings of fact. So it's just a little bit different than your straight-up zoning, because it's quasi judicial. We don't have many of these out there, but, uh, these normally are quasi judicial. And this is quasi judicial goes before the Board of Adjustments, so we don't see many of them.
Okay.
And honorably, you'll be, um, presenting, so we'll need to get you sworn in.
Why is this one quasi judicial?
Cause, uh, well, because our UDA says so, or, um, zoning code says so, but because it's a special use permit. And we're gonna look into taking, we got a lot of things from various zoning codes and some extra steps that they're looking at taking out.
You, you've got the halls on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll be on the work session.
But your, your code expressly requires it.
Alright, alright.
I don't like you.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give during this hearing? It's the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Okay. Hey, Bob and Wayne, can you guys see the PowerPoint? Is it up on your guys' screen? Somebody just confirmed. Yeah, okay, just wanna confirm. So there, we have a special use permit application, uh, for a pool in the rear yard. About the side yard located at twenty-one oh one Highland Forest Drive. Um, that's in the Weddington Chase subdivision. Uh, there it is, the corner, um, lot right here. So it abuts the side yard of seventy-four thirteen Stonehaven. That's what triggered this special use permit. The, uh, the existing location, it's gonna, it's a corner lot, here's the house. As I mentioned, um, seventy-four thirteen Stonehaven is the, uh, the lot that this abuts. Um, or where the proposed pool would abut a side yard. The applicant's Blue Heaven Pools, uh, the property owners are Bonita and Wayne Crawford. And, um, once again, because of our ordinance, they, uh, are requesting through the special use permit for allowance of a pool in the rear yard that abuts a side yard. And they have stated, it's like per one fifty-one.
Oh, five four, something like that.
Yeah. So, the request, once again, here's, here's the request location of the pool. Um, there is existing tree and shrubbery, and I'll get into that here in a sec with some photos. The pool is proposed to be, uh, forty feet off the both left and right property line. Our minimum is twenty, so they exceed that, that, those setbacks. The proposed, it's supposed, it's proposed to be fifty feet off the rear. Um, I think our minimum also there is twenty feet for the pool edge itself. Decking can be fifteen feet. So they have that, they made those adequate setbacks. They also need the adequate, um, screening and buffering. There is a lot of existing trees and shrubberies there, so there is no additional, um, plantings that need to be planted to meet our landscape and buffering requirements for pools. Here's a rendering of what the pool, proposed pool will look like. Um, this is basically off the back deck of the house. So the guy getting in further into existing conditions, um, I've got a couple pictures of their rear yard here. Um, so once again, here's the back, you can see, uh, pretty good dense, um, real, evergreen shrubbery right in here. And so specifically where my mouse is, that's basically the side yard. Um, so you can, it, it is very heavily buffered. Uh, no additional stuff's gonna need to be planted. Here's where it's kind of looking at from the backyard. So the pool basically goes between where this picture is taken and their back patio. I also took some existing conditions. This is Stonehaven right here. There's a sidewalk. Once again, here's that shrubbery. It's very dense, can't really see into it, so there's, uh, that screening and buffering is, um, adequately met. Surrounding Wayne uses in zoning, being in a subdivision, all the properties are zoned, what is our Marvin Residential Union County or UC. Um, all those, all the surrounding properties are zoned that, as well as all the surrounding properties uses residential. Here's some photos, once again, um, this is, this photo right here is basically looking from the driveway of the applicant's house, looking to the east. Um, so that's their neighbor across the street. Uh, this photo here is sitting, the house is basically to the right, so this is looking north, um, towards Stonehaven. And that's, you know, vice versa, looking south, looking down, uh, Highland Forest. So getting into what are specific ordinance states that, um, special use permit is required when, um, an instance where a pool in the rear yard abuts a side yard. Um, those minimum setbacks are twenty, twenty feet from the rear yard and, um, twenty feet on the side. The equipment must be twenty-five, uh, twenty feet side in rear yard. It must be adequately screened. The applicant meets those requirements. So kind of getting into, to review all this, the proposed pool does comply with all setback requirements, having fifty feet in the rear yard, um, minimum of twenty needed, and adding forty on both sides. And there is existing heavily screened, um, evergreens. Additionally, the applicant has secured approval from the neighbors. Um, it's actually part of their requirements of the Weddington Chase HOA. Uh, that's included in your guys' packets, a part of their, um, special use permit application, but both, both adjoining neighbors have, uh, given their written approval and consent with this proposal. As well as all adjoining property owners were mail, um, sent letters on February twenty-fourth. Uh, the property was also posted on February twenty-fourth. And Austin got the, uh, stuff to the newspaper, and they posted on the twenty-sixth and March, and then the fifth. Um, I have not heard anything from any adjoining property owners, but they were properly notified. Um, once again, I, they, none of them called, but however, the adjoining property owners did get their consent and their HOA approval. So when the special use permit, um, part of that quasi judicial process, you guys have to make a, you know, findings of fact and per one fifty-one point one oh three D. Uh, there's five, um, items of criteria. The first one is the use of not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where the proposed and developed according to plan. Applicant complies with that, per staff findings. The use meets all required conditions and specifications, applicant applies. The use will not substantially endure the value of adjoining or abutting property or the use in a public necessity, applicant complies. And the location and character of the use, if developed accordingly to the plan, as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located in and will generally, uh, conforming with the chapter, uh, with this chapter, which is, um, in our zoning ordinance and the Village Land Use Plan. Uh, you guys, as the governing board in this hearing, do have, um, the authority to have any additional review criteria stated in this chapter and can be considered an address. There's really no additional, uh, review right, criteria or anything that I think from a staff thing that needs to be added as conditions. And then finally, you know, it's staff's recommendation that the application, uh, meets all the requirements and goes above. And so, staff's recommendation to approve as presented. Planning board also reviewed this at their meeting, um, on February fifteenth. And they unanimously also recommended approval, um, as presented. With that being said, is there any questions from the council?
I assume the photos were recent photos, so it's during the.
Took it today.
Oh, okay. So, I mean, the only reason I ask that is because this is.
Like to have a little time?
No, no.
Feel true?
Time of year, you're taking it, cause when leaves fall and it's, you're, you're looking at.
Yeah, like this tree, those trees right there, those, you know, will bloom, but all the rest of them are evergreen shrubs and they'll stay like that. There was, I know like that one, that's.
That, that's one I was.
Kind of died out, but it's, it's so dense there that you couldn't, you can't see either way. And that's also, so this is, um, the road of Stonehaven is right here.
Okay.
You can check to see if the public has any, if anyone from the public has anything to say, and then you can move to close.
Okay, so anyone on WebEx land that has a comment in the public hearing, unmute yourself. Alright, no, it's a head fake. Um, alright, so then.
Motion.
Motion to close it? Need a motion to close the, uh, public hearing?
So moved.
Holes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna send, I'm gonna send something to your iPads, okay? They're getting fancy here.
Oh, move that, move. Dude, I'm there.
Someone is, Jamie moved this motion, so Jamie can read it.
I moved it.
Nope, Jamie did.
Oh, he did?
Well, it just went away.
Yeah, it's, you're still on your screen right there. I'm sorry.
Just take her notes off.
Um, I move to approve the request for special use permit application number two-two dash one-two-seven-eight-seven, twenty-one oh one Highland Forest Drive. Pool in rear yard that abuts a side yard has required by, required per one fifty-one point oh five four E three and find the following.
Yeah, you should have done it. That was silly.
I think you got it before I did.
The system cut said you did it.
The proposed special use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to plan. Do we have to do that individually?
No.
No, you can do it as one.
He can do it either way with something like this. We'll go ahead and read it all and. Joe, don't slow me down.
Here you go.
The proposed special use meets all required conditions and specifications. The proposed special use will not substantially.
They still need.
Endure the value of adjoining or abutting property or the use is a public necessity. The location and character of the proposed special use, if developed according to the plan, as submitted and approved, will be harmony with the area in which it is to be located. And will be in general conformity with the Village of Marvin Code of Ordinances and the Village Land Use Plan. Alright, so we, any objections to any of those?
I'm gonna send something else to your iPads.
Nope.
We go again, who's gonna jump in?
Jamie.
So this is how, this is how you vote on screen?
Voting's in progress. I didn't get the vote.
So, so at, or down at Village Hall, that'll come up.
This will be on the big screen, yep.
That's right.
So you still need to say out loud how you're voting?
I was gonna say, I think we still need verbal seats, everybody else, Keith.
Aye.
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 Aye. Good.
Motion passes unanimously. Look at that.
Do you, um, do you need them to do anything with a consistency statement for this?
It's not a zoning change.
Okay.
As I was saying, in the finding of fact, too, it has that, where it's consistent already.
Okay, so we'll, we'll just dispense with that.
So we're good?
Yep, it's approved.
Learning as we go here. Um, thank you. Now Village Hall?
Yes.
Thanks, Ken.
Next up is F, Village Hall.
Village Hall. So.
F Village Hall.
Spent a lot of time there, never not working.
Couple of things, the forms will likely be laid Monday or Tuesday.
The what?
The forms.
I mean, it was so raining out today, they couldn't have possibly done it.
So as soon as that gets done, as you all know.
In his truck.
The inspector will be called, he'll come out and let us know if they look good or not, and the concrete will be poured literally the next day. So hopefully, that gets done next week, and we could potentially have a TCO next week.
How, how's our furniture company? I feel like they're getting slightly irritated.
They are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Supply team. No, no, they haven't, they just wanna get it out.
So we've been working with them to keep pushing it back and pushing it back and pushing it back, and yes, they are getting irritated. But.
What do we mean by Christmas?
Hey, Christmas.
So, I don't have an updated number yet on the contingency for, um, where we're at. The last, I checked, I wanna say we're at forty thousand. That's, that number's gonna go up. Within that contingency, just so you're aware, we're gonna come back and, um, update you later, but we're gonna expect to spend about twenty thousand dollars on blinds. About eight thousand dollars on some stick wood. It's basically some decorative kind of paneling.
How much?
Eight thousand?
I got a better number today, but that's.
Not too, it's eight thousand.
Okay.
Are we talking, are we talking about it now?
No, 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 no. I'm just letting you know, I'm just letting you know. I'm letting all of y'all know that we're expecting to spend twenty thousand on blinds, not to, not to exceed twenty thousand on blinds, not to exceed eight thousand dollars on some decorative finishes.
Don't need to go out and vote on that one, the blinds?
I'm just gonna pull it from contingency unless anybody objects.
Okay, okay.
But I'm, I'm gonna, can I update what I did, just so everybody knows?
When, when she's done. You can give your Village Hall date.
Um, also coming from contingency, we're gonna have to pull the data drops, which is about two thousand dollars.
Sorry.
And then, any moving companies, if we have to hire any moving companies to hire, uh, to move some of our furniture, hoping that you guys can come in and help us move. But if we have to hire someone, we're gonna pull it from there. And then, the low voltage lights that will go out into the landscape, and so we're gonna get all that stuff situated after the fact. That's all I have for Village Hall.
Okay. Um, I wanna, just to bring up a couple things. Um, first, the shutters. So, we got a quote, an actual quote, where they came out and measured all the windows. And basically, that's where we're getting the twenty thousand dollar number from, I believe. So, I took it upon myself to do the old, let's go to Lowe's and let them do it, they come measure out and stuff like that, so. But I was able to, um, I guessed that what the windows were. And she gave me a price, and then I timed it by about thirty-five windows, and it came to like fourteen thousand dollars. And then I realized, when I actually went back and measured, um, I was way off on the windows. So, instead of, uh, forty by fifty-two, which I thought they were, they're actually forty by seventy-two. That moved the price from four twenty-eight a square foot, I mean, a shutter, to about five seventy-one. You do the math, times, uh, they're mostly all the same size, that comes in at nineteen thousand dollars. So that's going to Lowe's. That's them basically coming out, measuring and, and, and everything and doing the installation. It's also plastic, okay, versus wooden. Um, and it's, uh, probably a, at least a six-week or more lead time, and it's all within this leveler, which we picked and stuff, so. Similar, very similar to what they're doing. The group that we had come in, she's mentioned, what I liked about it, they were, I think, eighteen, actually, so they were a little less. Um, it was also, these, this is wood product, so it's the real deal shutters, four-inch slots, same thing with this, so it's all comparable. And it's made and manufactured in Monroe, Union County. Keep it local. I mean, so I, for me, it was like, okay, do we need to really put this out, even though that number kind of scares you? But you're looking at thirty-five windows, um, and, you know, I, I would be okay if the money's in the thing to get those things ordered, cause they, they did call me and ask me about that, so. Um, does that have to go to the vote, or do we, you guys?
It's just such a simple contingency, less they have a problem with it.
Okay, just for the record, if anyone's listening, we didn't do our due diligence. I think we're trying to incorporate the locals. Um, the other issue is, um, a couple issues on an accent wall we talked about. The first thought was what Barbara presented, which was about twelve bucks a foot, square foot. And you just peel it off, stick it, we cut it, there's no nailing or anything, very easy to put on, twelve bucks a foot, very expensive, gets up there in that number. Then I went to Lowe's and actually, um, considered, uh, flooring, and showed Kimmy these. Problem with these, this is as light as you get. These are actually floors, and it looks just like the floor that we have, so it doesn't really look like an accent wall. So it's, there's really no thing, but these are about three dollars and fifty cents a foot, three eighty, whatever, in that range, three dollar range. So then I talked to Eric today, I met with him regarding a table. Um, you guys remember when we did a little field trip, we saw his, what he did with his stuff? He said that he can get, and probably involved you and I in us doing the actual install, because it'll be easy to install. But he did that, and that was, he got a thousand square feet, and it cost him about three hundred and fifty bucks. It was all basically rejected wood, but you saw how cool it looked.
So cool, yeah.
The way he did it in his room and how he made this room happen. He said that you can, right now, they don't have any. It usually comes into play in the summer. That's probably when, and when they get it. And when I looked at the measurement, that's about exactly, we have two hundred square feet exactly in the front, and about six hundred on the street side. If we go in towards the, the main room, there's six hundred there, so that's eight hundred plus your waste factor, you're, you're at about a thousand feet. You have to order at least a thousand feet. But it's cool stuff, he could run it through his planer, and then you could whitewash it or do whatever you want. We could do some really cool stuff. And it won't get nearly into the number that you're looking at. It would just be a matter of possibly five hundred dollars for material, and then you're looking at installations, which, Andy loves to do that kind of stuff.
Pick me, pick me.
No, but it, it's, it may not happen right away, as we.
Which is fine.
Yeah, we're not, so, building ought to be there at least six months after the COVID.
The last item, uh, or maybe not the last, but.
What'd he say about the table?
Oh, thank you. Um, we, we're looking at the big room, correct? Cause he was looking at this, this is the one I'm thinking that's going in the smaller room. So he looked at the big room right away, based on, he would give at least four feet of around. He was thinking doing a ten by ten square, um, table in that room.
That would be cool.
And then you could fit, you need, he said about twenty-four inches per person. You could actually fit almost five on each side, five, ten, fifteen, twenty. Twenty people could sit in, maybe never get that many people, but you could fit up to twenty in there and still have room for cabinets and stuff like that, if, if we wanted to go that route. But once we got serious about it, um, then we'd have to figure out legs and what, and rustic. Um, to go back to the wood that he had originally from the first thing he, he looked at, it's all rotted out. It's, it's not good wood to use for a table, but he has wood available that we could pull from and stuff, so. It's still an option.
Okay.
Um, but he would recommend a ten by ten, maybe we talk to Barbara about that, see if that's something. But I think there'll be room, cause I know you were concerned about, is there room for cabinets?
If, just, the room that gets rented out to the public doesn't need to have our records stored in the, in the same room.
Right, right. Can't have your records stored.
Did he give you a number?
For what?
Did he give you?
Table.
No, no, he just, you know, I, he just wanted to visualize, see what we were dealing with and, and, you know, his recommendations, but, um, and I don't know what, we could figure out something with that, you know, so.
I was looking for a square table, cause that room's totally.
Finally, our artist. If you look around the room, you see a couple, um, pic, uh, pictures of renderings of the artist that did it for the premiere that was, um, inherit the land. So I met with him, he gave me all of the, the pictures and stuff. Uh, he jokingly said he can actually put us in some of these, and, but I, you know, but that would get kind of funny, but we wouldn't go that route. But I'd like you to take a look of them before you leave. Um, the only problem I have, as I said, he's, he's looking at three options, cause I asked about consignment, where he puts them up, and. Apparently, he doesn't like to put a number on these. He believes that, as artists, all artists believe, that it goes up in value when he's no longer here, or if this movie takes off, that type of thing. That's fair, that's his right to believe that, but I don't think we're buying this as an investment or anything like that. We're looking at purely for maybe some of the history that has behind it. Two that gravitate to me are the black and whites that are done, that are pretty cool. And then the other ones are more that was depictions from the movie, so it's not really. But if you look at the black and whites, that's actually from, uh, pictures that he drew and from the house that used to be located right next to us. But, so his options are, he wouldn't give me a price on anything, he said, just make me an offer. But there's two offers. One offer is actually buying it outright. But there's two offers. One offer is actually buying it outright. We own the copyright, everything about it. And by the way, if you haven't, forgot his card. It's in my truck. If you haven't Googled him yet, that she sent that out. He's well-known all across the country, CBS, ABC, any high-profile court cases. He's, what do you call it, a court?
They're a courtroom artist.
Yeah, they don't allow, in some of the courtrooms, especially like your US Supreme Court, some of the federal courts, they don't allow live cameras.
Right. So he, he does depictions of it and he's very well-known and, you know, but he didn't want to give me a price on anything. But there's a price where we had owned the picture and owned the copyright and they'll be able to reprint it and do whatever we wanted with it. Or there's just, we own it and that's all. We don't own the copyright to it. We just own that original. And then I think the third option was renting it. So for me, well, I'd love to display him on Marvin Day for sure. Maybe you can work that out and put him on some easels.
I've already got him confirmed for the dice. That would be a great idea.
Okay. You got who confirmed?
Gene, Gene Stowe for the dice.
Okay, Gene Stowe. Okay, this isn't Gene Stowe. This is the artist that Gene Stowe put me in touch with. But anyway, so this guy's like, if there's something that really gravitates, I know Kim doesn't like the frame. But I kind of like it because it pops in the room, but either way.
Do you have a feeling about what he wants for?
Nope.
He's an artist. I, and you know what? And as far as I'm going to say, I may say we're interested in two pictures. Give me a price. And he says, no, make me an offer. Says, I'm not going to go down that road because I don't want to insult you with anything. I, I wouldn't know the first thing we're to offer you. I wouldn't. And if you don't want to give me a price, then, because everything has to be done by committee. We're going to have to come back, get the price you guys give with whatever number he gives us and say yes to it. If, and then if he doesn't give us a price, it says, okay, thanks for letting us use him because we're not going to make an offer. But it's just not how it works. So eventually I think he would have to come with a price and it's just how they work. Cool guy, very nice guy, very, he trusts me, just gave these to me and said, you know, just have them have counsel. So they'll be here for Wayne and Robert. And again, we were thinking for town hall, something to add to it. And I think we're also looking at some other pictures.
Yep.
Yeah, I didn't like the rental option either.
See the one with the ghost in it?
That's all I had.
That's it? Yeah, okay.
Joe did his homework this week.
They were not working. He's in Costco.
These, these are really awesome.
And also a county commissioner with their wives.
I really like the stuff. It's cool.
Costco.
Let's go.
All right, moving on. Unfinished business. This thing shuts up every twenty seconds.
I can change that for you.
I know you can. Unfinished business. Consider approval of solid waste ordinance establishing regulations as presented.
Well, it used to have the owners in them, but now it doesn't have the owners anymore.
Where did, what?
Doesn't have the owner. No sponsor.
I thought I fixed that. It was there earlier. It was there earlier today.
I'll, I'll take this there. So Chaplin and I have worked on this for hours. So I'm going to go through and just kind of highlight.
So Chaplin's going to go on a nice vacation after this.
Nothing like garbage.
I'm going to go through this kind of in detail so that y'all are aware. These are basically the rules that were established for our residents so that we can hold them accountable in terms of solid waste collection. You can interject if you need to, Chaplin, as I'm going through them. So we started off with the definitions, as you see in your iPad. It basically goes over all the definitions of what terms you'll see listed in the ordinance is. Not going to go over them. Moving into the garbage and refuse disposal fees, this basically says that our fees will be set and they will be billed with the property taxes and that we can impose delinquent tax liens, or liens, I should say, on people's property just as you would in tax collection. The exemptions, it basically says that you have to have a franchise agreement with us to collect trash within the village, which will be a subsequent item after this. You will appoint active to have that franchise. This does not prohibit other people from entering our streets and carrying through, but if you're collecting trash within the village limits, you have to, you have to have the franchise agreement.
Except for the commercial, because we don't provide that service.
Yes. Collection supervised by the village of Marvin. This basically just says in a nutshell that we have the ability to make regulations concerning the days of collection and the type of waste containers and other pertinent matters. Pre-collection practices. This basically goes into detail about what we expect out of residents in terms of making sure their garbage is prepared to be picked up, meaning placement of the material, what types of material are allowed, the sizes, dimensions, that sort of thing. Yard waste, for example, cannot exceed five feet in length, twelve inches in diameter, and cannot exceed a total of eight cubic feet in quantity. Yard waste also additionally has to, any type of.
So who's measuring eight cubic feet?
The vendor.
The vendor, and these were terms, this is fun because it had to come from our RFQ because they can't obligate themselves or they didn't want to and I don't blame them. We didn't put it out that way. Where somebody could come out and put a whole tree, usually when you have.
I know, but I'm just saying, do you think these drivers know what eight cubic feet looks like?
Yes.
Yes.
Do they?
Eight by eight by eight. I mean, it's not really all that difficult to do.
Allison knew what a bunch looks like, what a big pile was. And that's where the person will have to call and make separate arrangements. And we put in here, when you make separate arrangements, it's directly with the waste hauler, not with us. The call is with them and the invoice is with them. So those extra fees or extra services don't come through the town.
Okay. The yard waste that can be bagged, like leaves, grass clippings, that sort of thing, has to be in clear plastic bags, no larger than thirty-three gallons in size, and they're limited to five bags with the exception of what the vendor dubs as heavy volume season, October through January, which ten bags will be permitted at that point. I'm just going to keep going unless y'all have questions. Y'all interrupt me.
Real quick, where's this, just regular household trash, is that required to be bagged?
Yes. It's number one, garbage. All garbage before being placed in a container for collection shall be drained and free from all liquids disposed in a clean sanitary.
Free from liquids?
Yeah. Disposed in a clean sanitary manner by placing it in a secured bag before putting it into the wheel container.
It goes on to define the recyclable materials and the rules and procedures for that. Goes into the recycling containers and the refuse containers are actually ours. I say ours, but ours are the contractor's and that they're basically giving them to the tenants to lease, so to say. They're not the, they're not the residence containers is what that boils down to. All the refuse has to be put into the container. So if you have extra stuff, they're not going to collect it. If there's extra garbage bags laying beside the trash can, they're not going to collect it.
Except, except right after Christmas.
That's right, yes. Moving on to collection practices, some definitions in here that kind of defines that we don't do large multifamily units. We don't do commercial and business units. It again goes into the yard waste and where you're supposed to place it. Holiday trees have to be less than eight, I'm sorry, trees larger than eight feet should be cut in half.
So.
And it has to be removed from all the decorations.
Thinking about that, if we do end up annexing this town home complex, is there going to be some kind of amendment to this? I believe it's five units. We call.
Glad to see you. I'm just curious, is this something we're going to have to amend or?
We would not, because we went with ten. And there was discussion with that and we just figured that was a good size. Because ten and under, they would have room for individual carts. And if you get much larger than that, you're going to need up one large. So we can have up to ten. I think that's called a small.
Small residential unit?
Small multifamily unit. And then large is above.
So for someone like him across the street, what are they going to do? Just allow them to go in there?
Yeah, we got gate codes for all of them now.
There's a discrepancy in the information that was sent out from the village versus this.
Which, which part?
Christmas trees. This says trees larger than seven feet should be cut in half before placing it in the street. Your ordinance says eight feet. So you need to figure out which it is. Thought I read it with seven feet on this.
In the RFQ or with earlier information?
It's something that we sound frequently ask questions. We can get it. We can get that set up.
Maybe eight.
Or corrected.
I just don't know which it is. I don't know what's in the.
But I'm in Marvin.
Eight would be better.
I don't think it was in the RFQs.
No, you, I think I had seven and you changed it.
And I increased it to eight because there are a lot of seven and a half foot trees. There's going to be a lot of twelve and fourteen foot trees here, but.
We'll just, we'll change the RFQ. That's, it's fine. The ordinance is fine. As long as it's less than five feet. I mean, it could be a ten foot, we could even say ten feet, cut it in half.
And they will take multiple trees, correct? Christmas tree.
I don't know about that.
I don't know.
If you can fit it in the can.
How many trees do you have?
Two every year. Upstairs, one downstairs.
It, it just says Christmas trees, so I would assume yes. They didn't say a limit or household.
So if it's eight feet, I can put it out there without it cut in half?
It's during their.
Oh, no, you don't. I'm sorry.
It's during the extra yard waste pickup time anyway, so if you put out two trees cut in half, it'll take a complaint.
But I don't have to cut one in half. I don't have anything to cut in half with.
I think eight is fine. We increased it to eight to give some flexibility.
I'll change it if we're going to ask questions.
RFQ wasn't specific and I think that's why we increased it another. But they have to be able to readily be able to handle it, much bigger than that.
You can just lob the top off. The top is at least that long.
It also goes into detail about the carts and when we want them pushed out. We basically said no later than seven AM on the day of collection. And then they have to be picked up by nine PM the same day of collection. You can actually put them out the night before, no earlier than six PM. So no earlier than six PM the night before, really no later than seven AM the day of collection. And then they have to.
Are you serious? Sometimes I pull mine out three o'clock in the afternoon on a Sunday.
You can call for me.
Yep, yep.
I mean, this is, you can make a revision.
Where, where is this?
That is in two sections. We didn't want to place time parameters to.
I mean, what if I go out of town on a Friday and my pickup's on Monday?
We don't want to see your garbage can on the.
Shut your mouth.
Yeah, that would, you'd have to get a neighbor.
Call a neighbor.
I don't have anybody that's neighbor.
What's your HOA covenant say?
They don't care.
They don't care?
I mean.
Oh, Lucy Goosey over there.
We have a garbage control guy in our neighborhood. It's in two sections. Y'all could, I mean, we wanted to place some time parameters because I've actually seen that with complaints.
How about twenty-four hours before possible pickup time?
I think, that's, yeah, it's only twelve hours more than what we've already got.
Well, I know, but there's some times where I'm like, Jason, don't they?
I think what you got in here is fine.
What section was that in?
I know, but who's, but if somebody goes, call me and I'm going to get a violation, I have to pay a hundred dollars?
Nobody's going to call you. And you got, and your HOA, you got HOA Nazis out there anyway.
Not my, not my, not my.
Mine was sticking out four inches and I got scolded. Just the other day, I called that one.
All right, do y'all want to keep it or change it? It's fine.
Leave it. But people are, people are going to lose their minds with it that way.
No, because people are going to read this.
Well, that's true.
People are going to, they're.
They're going to keep doing what they've been doing for years.
So who, who makes the fine, Mark? Yeah, this, this is in place if people are taking them out two days early and leaving them there and we start getting complaints, then we have a violation. And if we don't put anything in there.
Okay.
Because there are some people who love taking out.
It's not like this is the first community in the world that's ever done trash collection.
Do me a favor, Kim. You go out of town, call me. I'll bring you charge.
Oh, thanks, Joe.
Just one time.
You're such a gift.
There'll be a charge.
All right, keep going. I'm sorry. White goods, it basically says in here that we don't collect white goods except for the special day that we have and/or special requests that are made from a homeowner, meaning that if they have a white good, a refrigerator, a freezer, that sort of thing, they call in advance.
Why won't we take tires? If I can get into the trash can, why won't we take a tire? You have no idea how many tires I throw away. I'm not even kidding.
It's hazardous waste.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Is that why they just throw them out on the side of the road and let somebody else go pick them up?
You could take them to the foxhole though. They'll take them over there. They're special men.
Special assistance for moving your containers.
Not weird to say, I have them for tires away, sorry.
If you're a disabled or a handicapped person, you can't physically take your trash cart out to the road and then back. They will actually provide a service free of charge for those people. There is a process and they have to go through getting a written certification from their doctors unless they are eighty years or older.
So they just get free pass if they're eighty? I mean.
You had so many free passes.
I sure will.
I'm still looking forward.
Issues outside the service contract. This basically says if there's extra things, like I just mentioned, the white goods, if there's extra containers that is desired, that that person, that homeowner has to go through the vendor to get all those, those things accomplished. And they pay the vendor. Obstacles of collection. This basically says that you will not, you know, let your dog out on us while we're collecting your trash. You won't block cars or anything like that.
With your rooster animals?
Oh, I got to talk to you about that. That's what it was. That's what it was. That's what it was.
There's additional regulations in here about contagious disease refuge, so.
So we should, we should throw our contagious diseases away? I mean, what the hell?
You burn it.
Oh, garbage. But burn aren't contagious diseases.
You ready for that call?
There's also regulations, there's regulations in here that you cannot put aerosol cans, batteries, flammable chemicals in your trash collection. You can't put paint in there.
I'm throwing batteries away.
Or tires.
Kim's like, I can't throw anything away anymore.
No, no C and D.
No infectious diseases.
No C and D.
I can't put hot ashes in my trash can.
No medical waste.
It's all jokes. Sorry, sorry. I'm sorry.
For the record, anyone listening.
I'm joking.
And then we have the list of holidays that we have here. We also put in a disclaimer that we would basically observe other holidays if we wanted to.
Who makes that decision? We do or they do?
We do.
Okay, first what I think is going to happen, this is going to happen, we're going to figure out real quick what we missed. Something will come up and, and someone's going to complain and stuff, but you know, we're not perfect. We'll get there. And this is an ordinance.
So we can change it.
You can change it.
Yeah.
And you, you're right. We'll, we'll miss something. I'm sure we've missed a few things and, you know, we apologize for that ahead of time, but we're going to try and get it right and we're providing a service and that's, at the end of the day, that's what we're shooting for.
Look at it this way, it'll be saving for next year's vacation. We're going to do our visions.
There's some, some other regulations in here that if you want to haul off your own trash, you're more than welcome to do so, but you have to make sure you don't spill it on our roads, basically. Then it goes on to list the violations. So it's anywhere from a two hundred to a five hundred dollar fine based off of the first, second, third occurrence.
Can just take it off my salary?
Sorry, a hundred dollar fine, I should say. So repeat offenders, obviously the, the number goes up.
Repeaters.
So that is the gist of the rules and regulations. What we did, as you all saw, is kind of consolidate, consolidated these into layman's terms and put them into our frequently asked questions. Little blurb that's on our website, so it's there. Obviously we need to fix that Christmas tree one, but.
Do we do exceptions to the rule?
Exceptions to the rule. Do y'all have any questions about anything specific that you saw or anything that you feel is not addressed, that needs to be?
No, but I think Joe's right. We're going to mess with stuff and we'll just amend the ordinance as we go along.
We did put the little language in there that says, it's kind of a blanket statement that says, hey, we can make rules up if we want to in terms of holidays.
That means that we can, we can make it up as we want.
If I start losing, I'm going to change the rules.
That's the supreme level of legalese.
All right. So you want a motion for this?
I do.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to adopt the solid waste ordinance establishing regulations as, as presented.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Motion passes.
Oh, this one has a sponsor.
Next up. That was trying to go there.
There.
Okay. Next up, consider adoption of ordinance establishing solid waste franchise as presented?
Yes. Do you, I'll, I'll take that. She's prepared.
Yeah, consider adoption of ordinance to establish a solid waste franchise. I'm getting confused how to read these things, so. It wouldn't come up. I kept hitting it. It wouldn't come up.
Joe, any, anytime, you can always hit this button.
Just smack it?
You can alw- you can always hit this little button down here and it'll take you to where we are in the meeting. So it'll take you to that item.
Okay.
So this is the franchise agreement that is basically the license that Active have with us to collect solid waste in our jurisdiction. And this basically says, this is y'all given the authority to act and to collect waste in, in, in the Village of Marvin.
Chaplain, you're good with this?
Yes. You just passed something making them have the franchise and this is granting it to them and it terminates upon termination of the contract.
Okay. All right. Do you want to go over it?
Very short part.
Yes. Just grant them a franchise.
All right. So I'm gonna make a motion and we can discuss it if we need to. I'm gonna make a motion to adopt ordinance establishing solid waste franchise as presented.
Further discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sounded like a dumb line over there.
Okay.
Oh, I do have one more thing before you move on.
Yes.
Are y'all done with the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. So Active also wanted me to ask you all if you would allow.
No.
Absolutely not. If y'all would allow the village to send an email out to residents that live in the Village of Marvin that have delinquent bills with them.
No, absolutely not.
To what?
To send out an email to the people that have delinquent bills with them to pay their bill.
Current?
Yes.
No.
Before we take them on?
Yes.
Absolutely.
They want us to be the bill collector?
Yes.
Absolutely not. That's a hard no.
Why would we want to start off?
Not, not my, not my monkey.
Ticking off them. Obviously, there's a reason they're not paying. That's not our problem. Is that right?
That's a hard no.
Is that fair?
I would, I would agree that you.
Chaplain said, oh, no.
Yeah, I already communicated that to email to Christine. I, I just don't, don't think it's a good idea. They're acting as a prophet.
I mean, she basically.
I don't, I get why they asked you to do it, but, because they haven't been successful. Because they've got some collection issues. I just.
Send it to a collector.
I don't, yeah, I, I think y'all have already given y'all's answer.
I told her no, and I said I'd ask just in case y'all felt differently.
Did she not, she, did she not try to tell you that that was part of our contract, that they had to be paid out before they start collecting it? Um, I'm pretty sure that's what that email said.
It's not part of the contract.
Yeah, they were a little stronger on their first request, and I think Christine was a little stronger on the response. And this was the second request.
No.
Okay. That's all I have.
So that one does not have to go to a vote? Because she voted it?
Well, I mean, there's a consensus. Y'all, y'all don't agree.
I mean, unless somebody wants to do that.
No.
No.
I don't.
If you do, we'll talk about it. I'm still gonna be a no.
It's in the minutes.
I'm joking. It's all jokes. It's all jokes.
Good, good effort on their part, but no thinking. Next up, we have discussion consideration for Barcraft Subdivision Road Acceptance Petition Full Bond Release.
Okay, so this was on last month's agenda and it's being brought back to you guys and kind of just for a brief discussion. I provided you guys the recommendation from our contracted engineer. Basically, the last time the engineer sent that the only thing that was outstanding for compliance was three manholes and they were slightly below grade. He went back out there and met with myself and the developer and we reviewed it. I said that this is not my jurisdiction and this is gonna be, obviously, you know, the engineer's call slash, you know, providing his recommendation. Basically, the three manholes are still not compliant, but per his recommendation that they, having them come back and fix it will probably do more harm, especially upfront and in the long term than us just accepting it. It's not creating any type of issues with how the road functions or anything like that. So basically, it's being brought, you know, you guys' counsel can approve it or accept the roads or we can request the developer to fix those manholes. It's, it's your guys' discretion.
So why would it be a problem to go back in there and fix them?
The engineer believes they'll do more damage. Like he said, it's close to being flush and he thinks they'll do more damage to the roads than try to repair.
Is it below or above?
I think slightly below.
If it's, if it's below, I could prob- I could deal with it. If it's above, then it's an issue. And I can understand because if they go over there, saw cut and then repatch, then you have a cut that's an opening for it to get water and everything else in it and it'll be great. So I agree with keeping it. If it's less than a half an inch, like you said, I don't see it as being an issue. Might be a little bump or whatever, but it's not gonna be something that's gonna present a problem.
Tell me if you're going.
Because they.
Forty miles an hour.
You know, twenty-five, yeah. Okay. And the other thing is, is they won't haul water because manholes are perforated. They have little drainage holes in them anyway to keep them from happening, so I don't think it's gonna be a real big issue. They shouldn't be a little closer on the street, but.
I mean, we grew up there. I don't remember.
How, how did they fix fire thorns without having to cut a square out?
They did cut.
Yours were high.
No, theirs were low.
They were low?
Really low.
If you look at them, and I remember just the other day, I was looking at that and I could see a clear patch that was made.
They made a patch?
Yeah, they cut like a square patch and a round thing. It's what it appeared to where I was close.
Square patch and a round hole.
They can put a.
They're more than.
They can put incremental lifts on those rings, probably. That, that lifts it up. So like if you're, if you're adding a two inch layer of asphalt to a road, you can put a two inch ring to lift the manhole cover up. That's probably what they did in Fire Thorn. They lifted it up and then painted to it. So to fix it being.
Yeah, so it's, it's three manholes.
Have you been out there?
Yeah.
See, I've been out there recently, but I don't remember, because I'm, I'm usually, I pay attention to that stuff. I don't remember it being.
You, you wouldn't notice it until it was brought to your attention, and that's kind of part of it.
Neighbors complaining in there? They're mostly renters.
Haven't, haven't had any complaints. This is just being brought to you guys' consideration because long term, it is, it will be the village's responsibility. And that's what you're looking at is either potential complaints of that and/or potential complaints that they made the improvements and then have issues in the long term.
I think it's, I think the gamble is with leaving them alone for less than a half an inch. I think it's a gamble to leave them alone. The next time the road is resurfaced, it'll be, we can mill it and put it on grade and that'll be that, but.
Unless they don't do it right that time either.
Well, but we'll have. I guess, I don't know. We, I mean, we really need to have somebody really paying attention when, when we're having road work done.
What are engineers up for?
Well, that's what I'm saying, but paying attention to, they need to be out there.
I know, just like they were at Fire Thorn.
On the job, watching the street, making sure it's done right.
Contractors don't like.
Show up on the job side, I think.
Don't we get scolded?
Do we show up the job side?
All the time. All the time. I mean, I, I would be opinion that they should have done this right the first time, and I don't know why. We've talked about it before. I don't know why we're taking over something that's not up to our standards. That is my, that is my opinion.
Bob? Give me it.
I agree the same thing that Kim said.
Okay. Wayne?
I agree with Robert and Bob, which is Bob and Kim.
Robert and Bob.
Robert.
Okay. Jamie, where are you at?
Well, I don't disagree with that, but I, I just, I, I'm not a road specialist, but I mean, when you're getting it that close and you're having them to go back in and try to repair, I don't, I just, I don't know. Should it be done correctly? Absolutely. But again, you could probably find, you can probably go through Fire Thorn where they actually fixed them and find the variance that you have right here. And am I, and, and do I want them to go back in and fix that? You're talking quarter inch and inch variance? I, I don't, I'd rather just leave it alone.
Ooh, we gotta have a vote.
We gotta have a vote.
Well, and the other thing.
We're hungover.
The other thing I'll mention is too, is what, is the aesthetic standpoint of it, is that if you're coming in and making, and making those changes, like you're then taking the aesthetics and messing that up of a nice, you paved a nice road.
And you're drawing attention to the fix.
Yeah.
And ours is still not fixed.
Well, I agree.
So, but again, do you want them to come back in there and do another repair?
Not the same people.
Yeah, but you're talking to variance that's, that's so miniscule. I, I just, do I want it done correctly? Absolutely. Because I don't want anybody to think that, well, Jamie said he just made up care. I do care. But I think you can just reach a point with, with variances in, in something that it's not as of an issue.
And that's my whole point. I, I, I'm a stickler for quality and anybody that knows my work, that's what I do, but when we're talking about this with that small of a variance, I think I have to agree with the engineer. We're probably opening a can of worms by trying to fix it with that small of a variance than to just.
And you're talking about twenty-five miles an hour. If you were talking about sixty-five or seventy-five, I don't know, four eighty-five, you could probably just. Variants out there.
Yeah.
So that's just my take.
All right, so it looks like we gotta go to a vote then, right?
Well, my, my question is why if, why is the engineer saying it's second review? Like, why didn't he do it the first time out?
Isn't that what he said the first time out though?
He said they, they were lifted, but he was later reviewing based off of our standards. It was in, you know, then that conversation was like, he brought it to my attention. I said, you know, what is this like based off of, what does this mean? He's like, well, based off what the standards are, yes, they're slightly below. And he, the developer reached out and had a meeting with both of us and we all went out there. And then Mike was like, he did say, yeah, he's like, that's where he made this comment about doing the replacement and the fix would probably do more harm than good. And I'm sitting there, I'm like, I don't know what the, then, you know, it's, it's up to you guys.
What's the point of having standards? If the developers aren't gonna follow, what's the point of having, and then we're just like, yeah, it's close enough, then what's the point of having standards?
Same thing with the garbage ordinance. When people really start to deviate, then you can go and correct them. But you usually do have some deviation in the construction role and it's to get them where you believe it's close enough. Because then you have a standard to say, if this was two inches, you go, we have our standard and it's two inches. At some point, then y'all are the ones that get to decide, but that's where you get to look at the rules.
Do you want to table, go do a field trip?
I kind of do, because I'm super irritated about this.
I'll drive.
I mean, and yeah, that, that's, that's completely fine.
I don't know. I just, I, I just, it, it, just do it right the first time. Don't, don't do it half-budded and not.
I mean, we can table it and we can go look at it and, and then make a decision from there and just say, you know, how do you really feel about it? Because the only one that's been out there is Hunter and, and he has.
Okay.
You know.
Can we do that?
Yeah, and because the other thing is that if you guys were going to decide to approve it with that tonight, they have gotten three of the five encroachment agreements, and so I'm still waiting on two anyway. And the contingency is obviously getting those final things. It does take time to get those back from the utility company. So tabling it's not the end of the world.
Table it to the next meeting?
Yeah. Bob, Bob and Wayne, are you guys okay if we table this and do a field trip and go look at it? Bob and Wayne, are you guys okay if we table this and go out and actually look at it?
Yes.
Okay. Bob?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So to work session?
To work session.
Yeah, maybe table to work session.
I could probably get out on Friday and look at it. It's not supposed to rain on Friday now, so.
Okay. I've got a, I had a band filter, but I'll get out there.
It's only gonna take us ten minutes to go light it in the shop.
Not gonna pick me up, but I'm running over it really fast. Saying all of the next little profile. All right. We're gonna table that? We're good?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Moving on, consideration.
This can be tabled.
This table's time racing.
Table this one too.
And then if it's good, you can just put it on the constitution.
Discussion of the development of the pocket park. I actually drove over.
Well, this is me. It looks terrible, doesn't it?
I've seen Derek.
All right, so this is me, even though it says Derek, it's me. Okay, so we had Park Circle Greenway had been given charge of doing the pocket park. And we brought this sketch to council. And, there it is. And council agreed on it. To me, that looks like a pretty manicured, well-defined park. Apparently, there is some request to make it more of a natural wildlife habitat. Andy and I have had a conversation and I think it is on Providence Road, basically right in front of Publix. I do not want it to look overgrown and unkept, and it looks terrible right now.
Is that the finished product now?
Yes.
Oh, my God. Yes. That is not Marvin. I mean, it, it just looks.
That's gotta have.
I just thought someone went in there and just did the first cut and trying to figure out.
No.
That was as much as they would let them cut. And they, and Derek said that the contractor that did the.
We paid for it or whatever.
Yeah.
He said that because he was cut off where he was, he expected it to be a lot more. He said that we will have some credit with him to go back and do more clearing if we request it.
It's not clearing. It's.
You know, they cleared like thirty feet of it and that was it. The rest of it's still all scrub.
So, so I went out there with Derek and Chuck on Friday and, and walked it. And there is, there's an opportunity to continue to clean it up and get rid of some more of the scrubbies that are out there and do some more defined walkways that we can have Blue Ridge Trail come in and give us some.
Well, the main walkway, I'd like to see it at our trail standard. I don't like the gravel.
The one around? No, we can always.
I'd like to have Blue Ridge do their thing over there. That's, because that, that's walkable with a baby carriage or.
Yeah.
You know, that kind of, because you're gonna, that's what you want in a park. You don't want that rough gravel.
I would be afraid to walk my dog in that place.
Yeah.
It's that bad.
No, no, I know. I walked around it. I wore my boots.
I don't have a dog.
Muddy boots.
I wore my muddy boots. So there is an opportunity to take some of the trees and plants that we weren't able to use at New Villatall and put over there. If you look at the picture that's on here, you can see the Providence Road and you can see the dotted line there. That's the power line. So right in front, you've got three circles and then some other, and then four circles. We can take some of those arbor vies, green giants, whatever you want to call them, and actually do like a nice barrier there.
Screening from Providence, yep.
Screening from Providence Road and then kind of come down the side. There's actually a lot more arbor vies that we counted yesterday that have to come out from underneath the big trees.
Never know.
Never not working. And then we can really clean up. The, the parking lot side has basically just been clear cut almost. But I went in there with Chuck and told him which other scrubbies to get rid of, which trees to keep, or some screening on the Providence Road side. But then we can also come in with those trees, some, not all of them, but some of them, and put them in there. And, and so Derek and Derek really wants direction and some extra money, because we're gonna need a little bit more.
I can help Derek with all that. I, the, those trees, we don't want to cram them.
Right.
In a park. We don't want it to be, you know.
But we can put.
Anteas overlapping and all that stuff.
No, but we can put a few over there because they're.
And I think there's actually a couple of doglets left too for understory planting.
Okay.
So we can do some nice stuff with what we have in inventory down there and then the other stuff. To, there's some spots that Derek said the trails that could use some shade and maybe an opportunity or two at the park, but.
Yeah, but I mean, I was thinking this would be a good, a good option.
That's a great idea.
And we can go ahead and do that. Like, we can go ahead and get that stuff, get them back out there to finish clearing and getting rid of, and then we can kind of figure out where the trails need to go and then do some plantings, get some grass mulch.
What are the smaller trails within? What are they?
What are the smaller trails within? What are they, kind of the surface?
Blue Ridge Trailways, that works.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I I mean, that makes total sense. I'd like to see a little bit of grass in there for some color contrast and some just, you know, place for kids to roll around or
Yeah.
you know, animals to hang out, whatever, something usable. But I do like the layout. I mean, it's, it's an interesting layout. That, that, just that right there, that picture does not look what, like, what's out there, so.
No, and and this is, this is kinda what everybody agreed upon, and then it kinda came back to be more natural wildlife habitat. And it just, uh, it it just, it looks bad, and it's, it's just not a representation of Marvin and what should be right there on Providence Road. I mean, just it looks overgrown and weedy and.
I'm waiting.
Granted, stuff's dead right now because it's winter, but.
I'm waiting for the residents of Mar- Weddington Chase to say, oh, so when are you guys gonna do the park? Oh, well, it's already.
Yeah, that's it. Okay, so Derek just wants that we're good with kinda moving forward, doing, taking some of this existing stuff at Villatall that we have to move already. New Villatall, putting some of that stuff down there, but he's also gonna need a little bit more money. Do we have some more money?
We we do. We've got some left in contingency.
Okay, so I would say, you know, he's, he's gonna get a credit from the guy to come back, but he'll have to do, probably pay him a little bit more just to kinda finish and.
See how much it is from there.
And then, and then we're gonna need some money for some plants too.
Possibly some mulch and a few little things like that. Well, and the Blue Ridge, whatever they're gonna charge for the trails.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not gonna put the trailer in right now. We'll have to put it in.
Didn't Marvin High School having a mulch sale or something?
Yeah.
Through this weekend?
Yeah, Jill was asking me for a trailer for that.
I mean, that wouldn't be a bad idea if we, if we know we're gonna do it.
I got a trailer available.
To, to do it.
It's a fundraiser, so your health at school.
Right.
The Winter Guard, I believe.
Okay, Derek told that. Okay. Well, I mean, he's, I mean, this weekend if he's on vacation.
For the pocket park.
Oh.
Oh.
I mean, they're selling it. They're raising money. We're, we, we know.
Well, here's the deal. I think we worked out any leftover that we have that we would leave it at Effer Park until it gets sold.
Yeah, Derek's fine with that.
Okay. Because that's, that was their big ask. Then when I talked to the board, that they were concerned. It's seventeen pallets. They've only sold, there's, there's still seven hundred some bags to sell. This week tends to be, everybody loads up and stuff. But then any leftovers, they're looking for a home.
Okay, then we can buy some when, so Derek, I'll get on it. Okay. Okay, so everybody's good with kinda moving, or Bob and Wayne, are you guys good moving forward with making it a
Oh, yeah.
Pretty corner? Okay. Park Trucking Greenway will be disappointed, but.
Alright, anything else?
No, I'm sorry, you guys, you finished. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Next up, discussion of twenty twenty-two Marvin Day celebration. What day is it?
Marvin twenty-one, twenty-two.
Finalized t-shirts.
That date has burned into my brain.
Yeah, I'm kidding.
Take one passing.
T-shirts. So, we gotta get all our sponsors to get them in there real quick. When we say finalized t-shirts, who's got this?
Me.
Okay.
So, so coming around the table was literally, it's, there's a lot of extra stuff. You don't really need to look at anything other than the two pictures. Um, so first and foremost, looking at the logo placement, well, logo placement in terms of where you want it on the shirt, and then which option do you like? This option or that option? Disregard the colors that you see right here. I'll explain that in just a second. I'm just literally talking about the logo itself. So, it's those two options in front of you or this one right here. I just need y'all to select one of them.
Oh, he's gray. I like him better.
Well, the color.
Brown. Him.
Oh.
What's different between, I mean, he's got more color to him. He's cuter.
Yeah, I don't know why the color's like that. Oh, I do know, I do know why the color's like that, because they.
Impose it on top of red.
Hang on, one, two, one, two, three, four. They did it that way to reduce the number of colors.
Oh, okay. Well, so then that's not an option. So, why are you showing me that?
Well, the, the placement in terms of how this is.
Oh, there and there. Okay. I like that better. I like that one better, that placement better, where it's kind of around it.
Does your back still have?
Is that gray in front of it?
I can barely hear you, Bob.
It, I heard.
Okay, I'm asking, is the, the first one, is that gray?
It is gray, however, it's not an option to have it gray unless we wanna increase the cost of a shirt. So, um.
Okay.
It's the layout that we're looking at, Bob.
Are you asking, uh, which one do you like better?
Just layout, layout only.
I like the top one.
This one?
Yeah.
You like that layout better than this layout? Where it looks like a flag behind it, but we're just looking at, we're disregard the flag, right?
See, you've got it off, that one's, that one, you're gonna tilt to the side, because it's like on a rocker, one over the top and then.
I don't get the flag, but.
It's, it's, disregard the flag. Just look at the placement of the logo.
That one. You guys like that one.
Okay. Huh? Is that one one you like? Which one do you like?
So, it's just the difference of going all, all yellow or with the white on?
No, 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 no.
No, it's where the words are.
Forget about color. Forget about color.
It's only where the words are.
Layout, words. Words only.
I like that one.
Oh.
That one, it's off center. He's gonna fall over.
No, no.
You want him to fall over?
No, this, this one's just.
I like that one, but you got the top one.
Oh.
Okay, which one do you like?
I like that one a little bit, yeah.
That one?
I don't know, I mean, I.
Keep it down.
Just kidding.
Which one do you like? I like this one.
I'm kinda leaning towards that one, because it's.
Come on!
You're getting out voted again. Straight. Little.
That one's not straight either. It's got some character to it. Oh, you got.
Oh, you like that one?
Yeah, I like the flag one. It's balanced too. The other one's not balanced. It's gonna fall over.
One's like.
It's like, wait, wait.
Whereas.
I could go with that one. I could go with that one. I just.
Wayne, Wayne, you may be a timer here, brother. I just don't like the s- straight.
I don't like the straight one either. I, I don't like that one.
I mean, I.
Yeah, 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 I like that.
And they both like this.
Now, do you guys only like it because of the color or do you like the placement?
No, I, I like the, the fact that above the owl, you know, it's got, it's got
It's balanced.
Marvin Day, and then I like it to update that circular part with different dates that would be in future.
What?
Well, you could do that on this one too.
That'd be better, but it's just white, white.
Okay, so y'all wanna take a vote?
I'll hold the one with the flag.
Yes, so I got two here.
Alright, so you got two with that one and two with this. Andy, it's up to you.
So, you're agreeing by consensus on the logo.
Thank you, good, Andy.
And if, if Kim had a longer leg, you'd be.
Come on, Andy, make the right decision.
Oh.
Gotta remember this.
This is what happens when you're last and you can't make up your mind. You get to. Well.
Do what Andy do.
I'll, I'll.
Come to the dark side.
Go to the curb side.
I.
Balance.
I like them both. I um, I guess I will go with Kim and Andy.
Yes, alright, that's what I'm talking about.
This is what happens when you're out here.
Which way you going?
That one. It's not the colors. It's just where the words are.
I don't, yeah, I, oh, I see it. I, Andy.
Stop picking up and doing that.
Good job, Andy. Okay, so.
I knew, I, I was damned if I did, damned if I didn't, so.
Imagine how I was.
Let me ask you guys then.
Two years.
I know, but I was nice about it. I wasn't really gonna be mad at him if he put the wrong way.
I went with the people in the room.
There we go. We're gonna go with this layout. Yep, this layout.
Y'all seem to like this. Do you want me to get this one? It's gonna be a little bit more.
No, no, it's gonna be more. It's fine.
Alright, so the next thing is the, the reason this has a flag behind it is because these are the color of the shirts that we're gonna order. The blue for canceled, the red for staff.
Who?
Cancel.
Cancel.
Red for staff. And black for giveaways and also white for giveaways, or gray, whichever one y'all decide, so.
Gray, not white.
Y'all are okay with the blue for, for?
Which ones are volatile?
Wait, is that the actual red?
I don't know how the printer changes from, I, I don't know.
No, it needs to be a blue-red, not an orange-red. That's an orange-red. How, how do a blue-red?
What's a blue-red?
It's not.
It's a bridge. It's closer to purple.
A purple?
We're going into the red on this.
I like purple.
That's not purple.
So, are y'all okay with
Purple.
the blue for you all?
Yep.
I'm not gonna say that word.
Cancel.
For you, Mark.
For cancel.
And are you okay with white and black for giveaways or is it like?
No, black and gray. Is gray more?
Hmm, I don't think so.
Black and gray.
Nobody wears a white t-shirt.
Yeah.
Is there a white t-shirt on here?
Hi.
White t-shirts end up at Goodwill.
I realize that I'd probably get kicked for it.
What? What? Do you wear a white t-shirt?
All the time.
Really?
Yeah. But that's just me.
Like, with a logo on it?
No, just a.
Okay, now you need to ask them where they want the logo.
Yes, I do. So, the sponsors will be on the back. And then do y'all want just the left breast or do you want it across the entire shirt?
Ken's like left breast.
Um, advertising.
Left breast. Not, not big. Chr- Christine was like, told you what like big was, and I'm like, no.
Okay.
Left breast.
Yeah.
Alright, and then.
Why work the punch, not the kick tonight?
So, we're gonna order a total of four hundred shirts. Um, most of them being for the giveaways. And the sizes, we're gonna do fifty medium, fifty large, fifty extra large on the black. Then we're gonna do fifty medium, fifty large, and then a hundred extra large in the gray. And then I just need sizes from the rest of you to.
You need to throw some double X's on there.
Okay.
There's some pop top people.
Jamie, why?
Why me? Damn.
You don't need a double X, Jamie. No.
I don't, I don't like a t-shirt.
Come on.
Who is she?
Show off your guns.
No.
Yeah.
My guns have been shelled a long time ago.
It's hard, it's hard to hear you. I don't think they heard you.
Go ahead, Bob.
No, it's Wayne.
Go ahead, Wayne.
What do you need?
Um, are you, are you a little bit big people there or just?
Oh, big people. You want like kid sizes?
Medium's pretty small.
Yes.
Yeah, medium for small. And kids are whatever.
Yeah.
I said, what?
Even. Say it, Jamie.
Can't hear him.
So, we can, I can order some smalls, some men's smalls.
Yeah, that'd work for kids.
Okay.
My son's a mid, small. Kids like wearing it a little bit.
Medium.
So, I'll get with you all individually on your sizes and I'll have to get with the, the other board members too.
Everybody sent Austin your shirt size.
I just have all my sweaters.
That you want.
I could probably guess what happened.
Alright.
From previous, previous stuff.
I'm, I'm good on that unless y'all have anything further on t-shirts.
T-shirts are finalized. Check it off your list.
Boom.
And when is Marvin Day?
I don't know.
Wait, hold on. Oh, does it just have to be t-shirts now?
No.
What's up with fireworks?
Um, I talked to the property owner today and she's waiting on some information back from the vendor. Chaplain may have to get involved at some point to do a whole harmless. Um, but I'm, I'm trying to see if the vendor will do it first.
Yeah, I'll talk with that person.
The property owner seems to be on board. I mean, she's really nice and willing to go with it. So, she's, she's really just looking for long-term protection because she's thinking about this in perpetuity, not just this event.
Yeah.
Oh, I love that thought.
I tell you, she got a beautiful piece of property over there too.
Okay.
And we should make sure we mention that on Marvin, like, you're up there and seen. I got it. Got my list. Like, they grandpa. I'm a Juliet.
Alright, so this was Christina's idea, because I always give everybody credit when it was their idea, but I'll say it. We should do like, put together like gift baskets for the people who are donating their time, like her, that property, like the artists who are coming and donating their time, anybody that basically we're not paying to just say thank you. And Park Trucking Greenway board for other work.
Which would include a t-shirt?
Give them a t-shirt, get that bag, that's it. So, anyway, I thought it was a good idea.
So, yeah, I think it's great. We're a little recognition and.
Yeah, and just a thank you, because, you know, people donating their time and their players and whatnot.
We need to figure out when we're gonna give it to them.
Yeah.
Or something, we just give it to them behind the scenes or do we recognize them?
We'll probably give it to them behind the scenes, but definitely recognize them during your MC camera time.
I got it.
Did you, did Steph consult with you about you being the MC? Because I think they spoke with, across the street and she wasn't available.
She and I are gonna share.
Oh, okay.
You declared you're gonna be MC, right? Yeah, he was there at that meeting.
Yeah.
Well, I know that we had discussed her doing some, and I, I thought that they said she wasn't available.
Oh.
Pretty sure that's it.
I got this. No, I don't care.
Oh, and the website looks amazing. Do you guys have a mind to look at it? It looks so good. You guys gotta go look at it. It looks really, really good.
For Marvin Day.
Marvin Day. Like, on, on our website, the link to it, it looks really good. I told Jill, because she sent me the stuff, but I know you guys all put time and energy into it. It looks really, really good.
She said that she was unavailable, so the plan was to update the canceled that you're gonna
Who?
that y'all.
They're gonna do it. Update y'all.
Y'all, y'all canceled.
Okay.
You gotta quit doing it like that.
What?
Like, you're kinda like chucking stuff.
Alright, ready?
We're good?
Yep.
Um.
Yep.
New business. First up, we have discussed and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-two audit contract with S.P. Douglas.
Jamie, base.
So, I'll just open up real quick while she talks in. Y'all went out to RFP, this is when Chris was still here. When Chris was still here. When Chris was still here, um. We ended up getting a lower rate when we did RFP, however, because you know, we're still, Jamie's still learning everything and still knew. We felt that it'd be more prudent for her to spend one more time with this current auditor before she goes out to RFP and I'll let her just kinda turn it over and she can go in the details of the, the requirements and stuff. You want me to do it?
No. Um. So at the end of fiscal year twenty-one, our three-year audit contract, um, had expired. So I reached out to our auditor from this last fiscal year and asked for a quote. And that is attached here. And, um, it's best practice to go to RFP every three to five years, but it's not required. Uh, so we are recommending that we use S.P. Douglas for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two audit and sign a one-year contract for their services. And make sure I get the price right.
Twelve, seven fifty?
Yep, got it faster than me. Very good guess. Thank you.
Go from there.
So I thought they were great to work with and.
So I'm looking at the engagement letter and the first sentence, it says, "We're pleased to confirm our understanding of the services we're able to provide Village of Martin for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty." Was that supposed to be twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-one?
Um, it should be twenty twenty-two, so they just need to update it. I think they just.
Or twenty-one?
Where, where do you see that?
It's twenty-two.
It's twenty-twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, but I think he just resent this, um.
Okay.
I think he edited his original.
And they have a standard contract that's attached that's required by the state and it does have the proper date.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
That, um. The state contract.
Oh, it's this engagement letter.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, like, that what, like, we were good there, kind of saw that. Um, I'm fi- I'm fine going ahead and doing this, but I would like to go out to bid for next year. And I, I feel like we're kinda like late doing it this year, so I'm good with doing this, but I think next year we should, I think. And, and if they wanna come back and bid it again and be competitive, then I'm good with that, but. So I'm, I'm fine with approving this. Chaplin, you're fine with it?
Yes. Uh, yes, Bob's happy with it?
Bob, Wayne, any, uh, concerns?
He choose, he choose?
No, Bob, really, we need to go with them.
Alright, someone made the motion to approve the fiscal, fiscal year twenty-two audit contract with S.P. Douglas.
Who's that motion?
Yeah.
Further discussion?
Did I say that?
Yes.
I, I.
No, you said someone make a. Yeah, that's what I heard.
And then I said I'll make a motion.
Oh, okay.
She did.
I didn't hear that.
Didn't I?
You did. It's in the record.
Further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Aye.
Now how come sometimes I get to push the button to say yes and sometimes I can't?
Wait, because y'all started doing the stuff before I could hit the button, so then I'm just playing catch-up.
Okay.
Take it off, would you?
Everybody's a critic.
We're out of here, right? Discussion, and next up, discussion, consideration of sketch plans for the Heritage subdivision.
Okay, so, um, Villages receives an application for a major subdivision, um. But over here out there at El Priro's property, this is a buy right with the current residential, um, subdivision. It's, uh, a conservation subdivision, so it's yielding twenty-nine lots, um, forty-seven acres. Um, and basically the, that, that's an average, or the yield of point six one dwelling units per acre. The applicant is, uh, Jones Holmes. Mr. Ben Kuhn is here tonight. If there's, um, any specific questions, um, for him. Um, but, you know, to kinda go over, this is a currently buy right of the residential current resident, residential zoning district. Um, we have in our major subdivision process, the conservation subdivision, which allows for smaller lots, uh, not to go under thirty thousand. And then, then there's that, another situation, that twenty percent, I think, can go under thirty thousand, not below twenty-five thousand. Basically that, it's, it's smaller lots, but the yield of density is still the same. This promotes that conservation area, um. So it's kinda smaller lots, but more conservation of open space, trees and, and stuff. The application or, or, you know, this submittal has been reviewed by staff. It's, um, pretty straightforward. And, uh, does comply with all our standards and regulations and our zoning ordinance. The applicant held a PIM meeting on January twenty-sixth. And, uh, did have a pretty good turnout for that. I think roughly about fifteen to twenty people for both sessions. Um, some of the general cons- questions, concerns were, were dealt with, um, water, su- water and sewer. The view shed buffer slash tree perimeter, um, requirements. And some other, uh, questions, concerns of the existing wetlands. The, um, the applicant had to take some of those into consideration. Uh, none of that is necessarily required because the plan does meet our bare minimum. Uh, for example, one of the requests was to extend the view, uh, to expand the tree perimeter area at the end of the rear of the property. Our ordinance calls for a minimum of twenty-five feet. He doesn't have to go above or beyond that. Um, he does have to have a twenty, two-hundred-and-eighty-five-foot view shed buffer off of Newtown, which he does comply with. Really, the only way that this works is that if council granted a view shed variance for allow, for a lesser view shed buffer there, and, and then he can have a, a greater buffer at the back, but you know, that's not necessarily being recommended. Um, he does, like I said, the, the applicant, the submittal does comply with our ordinances. With that being said, is there any specific conditions? I mean, uh, questions?
What's, what's in that, filled in that view shed buffer? Is it mostly evergreens in there?
Yeah, it's pretty much all pine.
Yeah. Well, just a question here. It says, NC DOT may require right turn lane westbound.
Oh, that's, that's not supposed to be there. That's, uh, that's a typo.
Okay.
That was, uh, recycled, reused as the same format of another memo, so. Uh, disregard that. I think, you have had conversations with DOT and they did, um, talk about, you will probably have to do some road improvements.
Yeah, we will have to do some sort of road improvements. When we go to our construction plan phase, that's when they'll, when we apply right-of-reformment, then they'll have that.
Have you seen this?
In the memo.
Huh? Where did you see that?
Well, hell, I'm sitting.
You can zoom in on it. You can make it there.
No, I don't mess with the screen, because I, I really messed up fuck research.
The other agency notes.
Tap the square, you can untap the square and.
Your notes?
Wait, your handwritten notes?
No, no.
No, it's on the, um, the Heritage Sketch Plan Staff Report.
Basically, my notes are.
Take and scratch.
Hey.
Yep. No, I mean, they are.
And I got confused. If you get, it's the.
Well, those are where it drug put in there.
Third paragraph up from the bottom. And when I first read this, I was just like, man, I'm, I'm.
Oh.
I'm confused here, but.
Not required of it, okay.
Yeah. And this is kinda what chap, that, you know, just to, while we're on the subject, as Chaplin kinda mentioned earlier, is that this is a sketch plan phase. Typically, in most other municipalities, this is kind of all administrative. And then you, then you guys review the preliminary quiet construction documents. Um, so with that being said, like, everything does comply with our standards, uh, based off my review. And a lot of the additional information, when it gets into some of the construction and, and further review by myself and the engineer, will be part of that preliminary quiet construction phase, um, if granted approval. The, uh, if, if granted approval tonight, the applicant then has one year to then work on those documents and bring it back to you guys for consideration.
Okay. I'm, I'm good.
And this is what we would consider conservation.
Yes.
What, what are the, what are the price ranges?
One point two, three hundred dollars a square foot. It's all in there. Why do you even see that? You saw that? It's in there.
You interested?
That's in the P I, that's in the P I.
I'm always open.
I'm always looking. Yeah, the P I minutes. It was.
The P M minutes.
Thirty-six hundred is six thousand square feet, three hundred dollars a square foot, one point two million and up. Is that right, Ben?
Yep.
Yep.
I can't afford to live in this town. Can't afford to go anywhere.
I drive in.
Was an expensive house.
Mm-hmm.
Three hundred. I, I need to raise my prices. Not moving, Jamie. Not moving now. I'm sticking around. As I say, if you sell it, you'll get a lot for your house, but you'll also pay for, for your moving.
Recycling money.
Yeah, and it is, it truly is. Any, any other further questions?
Oh, stop it.
Man, is there anything else you would like to add?
No, I'm good.
Have you seen mine?
So. What? There we go.
That's on the record. That's Austin's like, told me every time I say a.
I do.
She said that's on record. Who, who said what?
You, you did.
What'd I say? Oh, potty mouth. Little expert there. We all heard it. Um. For all you middle schoolers.
They're out there listening.
I put a dollar in the dust for a jar.
I think we might just do a motion to approve.
Okay.
And, and I think it, it's really, it, it complies. This is one of those older things that's in here for you, it information. From the older days. But, but on, on this, you would say, you would make, the motion would be for the sketch plan.
Motion to approve the sketch plan.
As presented.
As presented, yeah. Yeah, I reefed, I touched up your motion, just to say as presented.
The last thing I'll add before you guys make the motion, any of the comments, feedback received during the P I M, PRG, P, uh, planning board. Um, the applicant can make some of those minor modifications as long as it does not, uh, during his preliminary quiet construction phases, as long as it does not significantly alter lot, lot layout and obviously change the yield in, in number of lots. Um, but that, that's something that will, you know, if he chooses, will be discussed during the next phase, if approved. That's all I gotta say.
Um, you gonna do my iPad magic?
Throw it out, sir.
Who's gonna move it? Now you gotta read it.
Oh, I make a motion to approve the sketch plan for the Heritage subdivision as presented. I mean, I could've done that without pushing the button.
But I can make you push the button.
That was that easy. I didn't read the paragraph.
You're the one who jumped all over that one. I was like, alright, somebody else is gonna do it.
Further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Wayne? Need to hear Bob and Wayne.
Waiting on Wayne and Bob.
Say it!
Bob's a statue.
Alright.
Bob got Bob, and got Wayne.
Alright.
Vote is closed.
Congrats. Steps, baby steps, right? Alright.
I mean, only because you're running the meeting, otherwise we couldn't move around.
It's like being in a roast.
Discuss and consider, next up, discuss and consider entering development agreement with JCH and allow manager to execute agreement.
I'll take this one. Uh, you've got a draft extension agreement. As you know, um, and have been getting updates, NCOD is gonna construct the, the roundabout that the village is gonna participate in. And the village does have a cost-sharing component of that improvement. Uh, what you have is an agreement that will, uh, facilitate that by, uh, the developer would donate a portion that would allow, basically called the fourth finger of that traffic circle to connect to Metal Arc. And it'll also make the development just more efficient. Um, you won't have to come in, build the road, and then have them bore up underneath, which is expensive for the developer, but anytime you have that, you've got traffic issues, you've got construction, it's safety. This gets it all done at one time. It'll also extend the, uh, the water and sewer lines to help foster development and just bring these lines further on into the town. And you'll get a development of, of a lot of houses that are given, gonna be fairly expensive. So that's what's in it for the village. Uh, what's in it for the developer, efficiency. DOT will not allow them to do a direct contract. They leave that to the locals because they wanna make sure the locals believe it's important enough to go through some hoops. So we enter into an agreement with the developer and an agreement with DOT, which is separate. DOT's agreement has not come back to us. It's somewhere in Raleigh. Uh, the, DOT wanted to get more specifics with the plans, which came through very recently. And then they sent it off and it comes back as an amendment. We do have a condition in here that if the amendment with DOT does not come back, uh, with the terms that we anticipate or expect, that this can be terminated. We're pretty sure what the addendum's gonna come back with DOT, but we don't have it yet because things may be a little bit different. So that, that's one of the key points. Uh, the next is, basically, they're gonna add two uh, provisions, extension of water and extension of sewer. And it's depicted on the plans, which are very hard for us to read, but they had the engineer do that. They really know the estimated costs at this time.
Is this DOT doing the work?
Uh, DOT will bid this out, have this, this part of the bid. We have to have money in hand. DOT wants it approximately a month before bid out. They're planning on sending the bids out in early October, which will be the advertisement and award in December. That's their timeframe. So we put in here a payment by September third. Uh, we did a, they've already gotten an estimate. Estimates of the two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand. Didn't have that at the time we were drafting this. They will deposit a hundred-and-twenty-five percent of that to give the village cushion. We will immediately transfer the, the hundred percent of the estimate to DOT because they will not advertise it until they have that. Also have a provision where the land dedication is gonna be made in here by April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. DOT plans to have all land acquisition done by May first, so they say. And this is the Friday before that. Maybe a little earlier, i- if the closing, uh, goes through. If for some reason this project stalls, and stalls, and stalls, uh, both parties can terminate the bid and accept it by December thirty-first. Not much risk to the village. Theoretically, you could have costs increase more than twenty-five percent. I think I talked with you, Andy, uh, about this, and you're like, there's not much rock here and they're just boring up underneath. Also spoke with DOT. Twenty-five percent's a pretty fair, i- i- in good.
But what if it goes over twenty-five percent?
Okay, so when the bids come out, that is the estimate from the, um, engineer. The engineer provided a per foot estimate. That's the estimate prior to the bids going out. The bids go out and say it comes back and it's five percent or more higher than that, then they get to add, put more money in the pot. So if it comes back at three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, that would be fifty-five thousand more than what we anticipated. And they'd have to do a hundred-and-twenty-five percent of that additional cost. So we're always gonna be a hundred-and-twenty-five.
Is there a possibility of overruns? Like, once they get into the project and they're like, oh, well?
There is. Uh, there is, and there should be a change order. If that, if it's that significant, there's gonna be a change order. And we have language in here that they're supposed to, they have to provide us funding. Uh, and if there's a rock or something, that just, you're born down a few feet underneath an extended sewer. They're getting a per foot price. DOT's getting a.
Are they boring or are they trenching prior to construction?
Uh, probably trenching.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll trench. No, they're, they're trenching.
So then it's. Likely it has to be a problem when they're.
So.
They're open trenching and they're gonna get a price per foot to put to bid.
So regardless of whatever it ends up costing over what's been deposited, overruns, whatever, then we're in the middle of the project, we're knocking down the hook for money.
We are on the hook to DOT. We will pay the, uh, hundred percent, but we're not paying that until we have the money. We're gonna put it in us. The developer's gonna give it to us.
But if we're in the middle of the project, and we, and we have spent all the money that we've been given, then we're gonna have to go back to the developer and say, this has happened, it is gonna cost more.
You, you're gonna have a binding contract from the, it's gonna go up to a G C with a per foot price.
Okay.
They're gonna trench it and lay the, they're gonna know each, uh, each manhole is gonna cost ten, ten thousand. Each foot of the pipe laid installed by the per foot price. So it's, the, the twenty-five percent is a.
I'm just thinking of like the overruns that we run into with doing the roundabouts with DOT, and they're just like, well, it costs an extra four hundred dollars.
They're gonna, they're gonna advertise.
Because you're looking at roads, what that they're doing versus, it's pretty cut and dry.
This is pretty cut and dry. They're gonna get a per foot.
Yeah.
Uh, and the per foot will get passed on.
Okay.
Pretty accurate. So the twenty-five percent variance, I mean, unless fuel costs go crazy, crazy, which they are, but still, twenty-five percent should still be.
Yeah, twenty-five percent is a a good cushion, and you've gotta pick up a number that's reasonable for everybody.
Uh, any changes or add-ons, I think she was trying to ask is, it's really, it kinda goes back on to the develop.
We're gonna send it out to the, we're gonna.
Send back to them, they're gonna say, okay.
Okay, I'm just thinking, sure, sure.
Uh, no liability for the town, uh, reimbursement of legal costs, which was something they agreed to do early on. Uh, so the town gets to, uh, more efficient roundabout, some economic development. And the developer will get a more efficient transaction. Theoretically, they can terminate if the bids come in too high, and they would notify us. We've got three days.
Three leg, right?
Yeah, no, go to a three-leg, but that's DOT's gonna be, I mean, that means costs have gone up for everybody. DOT's gonna be, because they're adding it in. They've already, they've already got a crew out there relocating utilities. So this will be a per foot add-on, which is a lot better. Uh, plus you'd have to do the boring and all the other things, so it'll, it'll go through, but we would have to, they would, we'll notify them of the bid opening and, uh, we just need to watch the price there, make sure it doesn't skyrocket. And, uh, we just need to watch the price there, make sure it doesn't skyrocket. If it does, they've gotta deposit the, it goes up 50,000. They're pretty good at estimating, uh, numbers, but I get it, it's a crazy town, but we do have.
I'll just become 1.3 instead of 1.2.
There you go. Yes, exactly.
Pass through.
And they're gonna wanna pass it through because they're gonna wanna sell those 1.2.
To your, to your point about what, what's in it for the Village too is, and more importantly, the neighborhood that's right behind there. That fourth leg is, is, is everything, I mean, that's so much safer and it's, it's just the way to do that, you know, roundabout.
Supposedly, safety.
Yeah.
Um, okay. You know, I, I believe it is designed to approve with any, uh, subject to attorney of view, review. We should have this wrapped up in the next few days, but we keep on getting more information. And I always say, if it's substantially in the same format, we're good, and we're 98%. I've got a change on my way here with, I think, four or five words, uh, to make it more consistent. But this, this will be pretty close to the agreement. Uh, and we just need to make sure that DOT's agreement is consistent with this, is what we've been told by, you know, emails. But if it's not, then we're both gonna be disappointed. Because, uh, the developer spoke with DOT as well. And, uh, and I did ask DOT if we needed to ask for the money prior to September 3rd. And they're like, and that's, that's getting pretty quick. Um, they think they have it lined up for October advertisement date. Which also gives you an update on the timeline they're looking at.
So you're good?
I am.
So what do we need to do?
Make a motion.
I've got it here.
You guys good over there, Bob and Wayne? Any questions? Good?
No.
You keep trying to move it, it's not gonna go anywhere for you.
I know. Who's gonna do this? Who's gonna make this?
It's gone.
Uh, Jamie did it, so Jamie has to read it.
Or it just left, what happened?
Well, now it's there, right now, now read it.
Go back to your detail screen.
Okay, good.
I make a motion to enter into a development agreement with JCH and allow manager to execute agreement, continue upon attorney, attorney review. Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
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 And Wayne, need to hear Wayne. There you go.
Alright.
What baby's that from?
Thank you. Moving on.
Back to school.
Uh, discuss and consideration of full bond release of bond for Marvin Gardens Wet Pond Number Two, Bond Number 107. 317715.
I don't know what a wet pond is.
It's a pond.
It's a pond that has water in it.
Tension pond. But where is it?
At the back of Marvin Gardens.
Some, to the back? Why do they get a bond back for it?
So when it got approved, uh, this is where I.
Very confused.
I, a little bit was confused too, but what?
No, I'm just playing real.
That makes me feel better.
From what I put together is basically, the original Marvin Gardens development did have a bond, we weren't the Alwagi. Uh, and the Wet Pond Two was contracted out as a separate addition to the original development. The contractor, or Wim, Wim Co-Corp, then posted a performance bond for the completion of the work and had us listed. It was sent to us in November, October of 2020. Um, the work has been completed, has been reviewed by our engineer, and basically, we just need to not release the bond.
Weren't they, didn't they have problems with that pond before?
Remember they had problems with it.
I don't understand.
Is this normal amount of time?
Yeah, I mean, with the, yeah, I mean, basically, the bond is to cover that they're, um, going to complete the work for what was approved. Uh, once the work's completed, I mean, with this, this is kind of different because it's like I said, it's, it's specifically for just the wet pond. Um, if, for example, it was tied to the whole development in, in general, and there were other improvements to be made, then we would be holding the bond to all improvements are made, but the, this bond is specifically just for the wet pond. The pond's been completed, and it's been inspected by the state and by our engineer, and it's compliant by our standard. I think the engineer and the state has also issued the proper permits.
So this page number four on here was, got estimates, like earthwork, fencing, landscaping, all that's been done?
Yes, all that was part of the, the original performance bond.
So the state will take over maintenance, maintenance in terms of inspections? But it's the exact same amount as the bond, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just a secure payment for them to do what they said they were gonna do.
So if they didn't do it, then we would have to take the money?
So if they did do it, we would go and collect on the bond, and then.
We would do the work.
We would do the work.
I got it, okay. Alright.
Usually there's more cushion put in.
I mean, it was the exact amount.
Yeah, no, you, under, um.
That's why I was like.
Under state law, and then the 25% that I used, um, this agreement follows state law where you can do the bond. Municipality can, you can have them secure 100%, but up to 125. 100, generally does 125 now, um, that's how they're, most of these are done.
I think that's smart, because prices may go up.
Yeah, uh, and it's bigger when you've got larger items.
Alright. Alright, I make a motion to approve the Marvin Gardens Wet Pond Number Two Full Bond Release in the amount of $25,984.24.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Me, Wayne, and Bob.
Aye.
And Wayne.
So that much of delay?
Wayne, are you there?
And this could be partially our connection to.
Electron.
There he goes.
Electronically, you are.
Yep. He vote, he, he did vote on here, so I want to hear his verbal confirmation, so you're good.
Alright, sounds good. Um, open topics, um, I have one quick one.
That hasn't ever happened.
Let's try it. That's like kind of an oxymoron, isn't it?
A quick one?
I'm trying to find the, uh.
Joe, quick. Jumbo.
What's the over/under on that? Um, uh, anyway, um, real quick, the Board of Trustees for the public library that's being built, I don't know if you guys know about that, but, uh.
Hey, you told us about it.
Anyway, they are shortfall 1.5, whatever. The, I got a, um, a request. They would like someone from a representative from the Village of Marvin to sit on their Board of Trustees for, and it's everything from fundraising to different things, so I thought, I, I know you don't like fundraising and stuff. But, uh, um, you know, there's, there's opportunity to be on the board, number one. Uh, I would think, you know, I was thinking of some people that may be interested to, that have been after us to build a library, and here we are doing it. But, uh, throw it out there, is there anyone that wants to take on or consider?
Andy, you don't wanna get fundraised?
I, I'm actually inviting, um, Julie Thomas and her husband, who's gonna be running for council, and, um.
County Commissioner.
County Commissioner.
County Commissioner, sorry, sorry, sorry. Um, and then her boss, and I think it's Angela, that's what I was trying to find, her email. Um, basically, I'm, I'm inviting them to, I think we invited you to, or Teach For America, the breakfast thing? It's kind of ways to understand how people fundraise and stuff like that, so I'm gonna, we're gonna ask them to be at our table and stuff, but. They get a free breakfast. Anybody else want?
Yeah, it's really not free, though.
If one of you all are, if one of you all do, uh, are appointed to this, you would qualify under our, under the Village's, um, compensation, so you would get paid for it. Pretty good count is your extra.
What, what, what's the? I don't know all the details.
It's any.
I, I.
It has nothing to do with the village.
I, I sent an email back to her about even, does it have to be a council?
Any other bodies to delegate.
I mean, could it be just a representative? I know that's passionate about the library and stuff.
Okay.
I, I don't know that, but I can find that out. I, I thought I had two, I mean, I'm actually.
Well, I've got something in mind.
Okay, okay. And I, and I'm actually thinking of when I presented it to my wife, she doesn't necessarily need to be on another board, she's on two nonprofits and three regular boards. She's bored. Get out. Um, but, you know, it's an interest, I mean, if you ever, it's, it's a way to get on, to be part of the community, so. Um, well, then we can talk later, so. I just thought I'd reach out to the immediate, uh, council to see if anyone was interested, but, um, we'll talk later and then I'll get back to them, so. Okay, that's all. Believe it or not, I'm gonna swipe up, go over. Agenda items, review action items.
Okay, I actually don't have much. Um, Christina will, uh, discuss with State Representative Willis about having a new town road resurfaced when they installed the roundabout. Uh, Hunter will, okay, well, we're, we're tabling Barcroft until the, to the work session, both the resolution and the petition. Uh, we will move forward with the T-shirts for Marvin Day. Let's see. And Christina, do you have anything? Because I really didn't have anything else on my list.
We'll plan for RFP audit for next year. We'll put the off-duty roundabout back on the work session. Um, get irrigation quotes for the roundabout. And mulch from the band, get baskets, quote for Blue Ridge Trail Works for the pocket park. That's all I have. That's it. So now they get, forget something. We just kept saying, oh, that's.
Okay, anything else? Right, review of ongoing action items?
Let me open my, let me open my list, hold on, I gotta get ready.
That risk, that list is getting shorter and shorter.
Yeah, it is, y'all are doing good, we're all doing good, I guess.
Okay. Christina, the one that says check with ENE Power on the roundabout agreement, is that for the third roundabout? I honestly don't know, I can check with them on the third.
That's dated for December 14th.
I'll go back and. I'm wondering if that's to make sure that the lights are installed for the third roundabout?
I'm 95% sure that's what that is.
Okay, so let's clean up that title, third roundabout, just so we know what we're doing. Um, Hunter gave us an update on the park. Have we executed any Blue Ridge Trail Works?
Yeah, all of them, and they were actually hot dog.
So Hunter gave an, Hunter gave an update on the Polte Park.
Internal Preserve Trail, that one was done too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, have we got an estimate for the?
I don't know if we got the estimate.
That wasn't included, so it'll be a change order.
And I'm working with HOA and Surveyor, get all that stuff on those too.
Boombrush.
But we don't know if Derek's gotten quotes for it yet.
I'm pretty sure he hasn't, yeah.
Okay, execute contract, Blue Ridge Trail Works, Blue Ridge Trail Works, Boombrush contract?
I have not executed that.
Okay. Levelled his lighting, Andrew.
Andrew.
You said you were gonna look into it.
I did look into some, I gave you some options.
I know, I liked them all.
I know, that didn't help me out.
And then I circled my favorite one.
Yeah, and that was the one that's on clearance.
Right.
So, I don't know about availability for that particular one, but.
Okay.
Alright, so just for everybody's information, uh, we discussed possibly doing lighting at the park to light up the trail from the barn to the parking lot and in the parking lot. So I looked at Lowe's, um, you know, I, I did some research, found out that we can use regular fixtures and use a 12-volt bulb that will fit a regular fixture, so I can run low voltage to any fixture that you can imagine. So we looked at just simple lamp posts. There were half a dozen different lamp post tops, and then the, uh, the posts were a simple round post with a little, I don't know.
Crossbar.
Crossbar, yeah, thank you. They're like 30 bucks a piece for those, um, the, the tops ranged from, if I'm not mistaken, 40 to 80 dollars a piece. So they're relatively inexpensive, they're probably not gonna get beat up because they're an actual lamp post. So they're gonna be fairly resistant to damage. Um, I did some, uh, research on the lighting, and I was correct, about a 50-foot radius from each lamp would be illuminated with the correct bulb in it, um, so.
So how many would we need?
I, preliminarily, I was thinking about 10, but I can go and do some measurements to get actuals.
So they're gonna, so they're gonna be about, let's just say $100 a lamp post, just conservatively?
And then.
So $1,000?
And wire and transformer.
So 1,500? I don't know how much would a transformer be?
I, uh, just got one, well, we bought one for Village Hall, I can go back and look at that receipt. Derek purchased it, and the wire, we can go back and look at that, I mean, that's local, I can get that from the, from.
So you think like 1,500, maybe 500 wire transformer?
1,500 or less to do the whole project, I think. Um, so, well, yeah, because I think, I mean, we're like, five bucks a bag for concrete, the cement and concrete, dig a hole for concrete. They should be, I mean, it's not like they're, like, holding up a fence or anything, they're, they're pretty light, so it wouldn't take a lot to hold them up.
Okay.
So, uh, I don't know what y'all think, but my thought was the lamp posts would be kind of decorative, and they would be durable, and they would do the job if you need to do, and we're not talking about high voltage, so we don't have to hire an electrician or any of that, we can just do it all at low vol, low voltage. That's a cheap way to run it, we can turn them on and off at will, or we can have them come on and off on a timer. Um, a lot of timers nowadays, you can adjust so it comes on at dusk and goes off, um, with settings ranging from one to eight hours after. So it makes it pretty easy, like, you know, at the park, just on a normal basis, it'll go off an hour after it gets started. That makes sure everybody gets out of the park, if they have a special event, we can.
Change them.
Change them manually.
Okay. Do you guys wanna move forward with that?
Well, the only thing I was thinking is, I encourage you guys, they can't do it, but when we leave here, if we go that way, look at the light up against the church, it illuminates the whole church, it's pretty cool.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's very intrusive to the neighbors, and it costs a lot of money to run that joker.
Well.
I mean, we don't want that, but that's not.
And it's high voltage.
But that's not the point of.
Is that high voltage?
Yes.
Well, yeah, that's.
But that's not the point of, at the park, like, we just want it to illuminate the walkways, we're not trying to, like, light up the barn.
Well, I, okay, I thought you were actually talking about lighting for.
Village Hall, now, and then, and again, that's gonna be intrusive on the neighbors, and that is line voltage, and it is very costly. Those are halogen bulbs, you could cook an egg on those things. That's, that's old, old-school technology.
No, I know it is, it's just, it's, it's impressive when you drive by, but.
It is, but, yeah, we can do a lot better with low voltage than that.
Alright, so, do you guys wanna move forward with the low voltage lighting at Eber Park?
What's the cost?
$1,500 or less.
Somewhere around there. And what we can do is, uh, and I don't know if you guys wanna just have, uh, I can get all of the light options together, we can all look at as a board, or if you trust the design committee over here, say you wanna pick one. I don't.
So Flower Town Hall's coming out again.
Looks pretty good.
No, I'm just saying, I mean, you guys wanna, it's time to pick out the.
I'll pick it, I like them. I mean, I like the one that was most popular because it was on clearance, so there, you know, there's only a couple left.
Well, it's like a kite, and I'm pulling string, and every once in a while, I pull her back out of the high wire, she just sits out there.
But, yeah, I mean, it, whoever, look, however we pick it, we pick it, I'll go.
It's gonna look pretty.
And it will be pretty. But I'll do a, I'll go down and measure everything, and I'll get you a hard number of how many posts that we need. But we, we have an idea per post, about 100 bucks a post, and then the equipment.
So we'll put it on the work session?
We can do that.
Okay.
Take it out of power bill.
Take it out of power bill. Uh, we purchased the traffic radar?
We did.
Okay, you can mark that off the list. We got the no left turns, we can mark it off the list.
Skip that next one.
I am. Looking on that, we're looking on that.
We did the development policy, that was on consent.
Yep, we can take that off.
And the posting bracket.
Take that off. Oh, you haven't gotten Mr. Stowe's history pamphlet yet, Austin.
That was me.
That was, that was staff. The mayor, that was says staff by it.
What's that?
Mr. Stowe's pamphlet, can you pay attention, we're almost finished.
I'm trying to get, I'm done with this.
Weren't you supposed to get the pamphlet?
From where?
About all of, all of the places throughout.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't.
I'm moving on to the next thing. I'm moving on to the next thing.
Were you supposed to, Austin was going to do that?
I didn't think it, I didn't know it was me.
I, I'll reach out to them.
Okay, Joe's going to do it, put Joe's name aside that instead of staff.
To-do list, reach out to.
Put Joe's name beside that instead of staff.
I will fix that. Joe.
Okay, I'm done, I'm, I'm done with you now.
Oh, no.
Did you mess it up?
Is it fixed, going to fix itself? Oh, my annotation shifted.
All, all we're needing is, uh.
Are we going into close session?
Has some for, for the pamphlet?
Yeah, the pa, the walk, yes.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Comments, uh, Bob, you covered you.
I'm good, thank you.
Thanks. Wayne? Maybe hardly sign language, maybe.
He says he's going to. Next.
Jamie?
Real quick, um, by the time we never do shout-outs to the different boards, um, but PRG Planning Board, I mean, I know they've done a lot, especially with Marvin Day, staff, great job with Marvin Day, we're getting close and excited about it, really excited about it because we're starting to see all these things coming together, but shout-out to all the boards that, that support us and do stuff to help us along with staff, so thanks, and also shout-out to law enforcement, um, y'all do a great job and be safe.
Keep getting them out there, get them, get them.
Andy?
Uh, I'm good, I believe Jamie pretty much covered it.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, I, I thought I was good too, but I had a few things.
Real quick, real quick, no.
Seriously, thank you, staff, because Kim just had, I went on and I saw what staff did, what they've done.
It's awesome, you guys got to look at it, it's so good. That's a shout-out.
One of the things I'm doing is I'm sending a letter out to really encourage the band members, if they're not available for the car show, which is really what they do is to, we're going to have areas all day long and to show them that and direct them to that and see all the things that are going on, you can't not love it. In fact, one of the things we're doing this Sunday, by the way, is Coffee With Cars in Waxaw, so, um, my hope is to have a flyer with the QR code and they're up and running all, uh, fairly soon, um, that's Sunday at Waxaw at the Harris Teeter in downtown Waxaw.
What do you mean, you want a flyer with the QR code, like our flyer with our QR code on?
Nope, no, it's, it's going to be the QR code for the, it's going to talk about Marvin Day, but it's also, and refer them to, that QR code will send it a, a, how you contact, what's going on in Marvin on that car sheet. So really I'm passing out flyers for the car show, hey, come, come be a part of this, if you want to learn more about Marvin Day, go to this website and then that happens. We'll be passing that out Sundays, so if you're available Sunday morning early, it's from like seven to.[1704.34]